Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here today to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between the traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, song, dance, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, councillors, I declare the meeting open. councillor Hutton, do we have any apologies?
Chair, I'd like to advise that councillor Johnson will be absent today, and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that councillor Johnson be granted a leave of absence for today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Apologies, Chair. I move that councillor Marks will be absent today, and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from this meeting.
Noted. We will also...
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that councillor Marks also be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much. I wish to advise councillor Griffiths will be away for today's meeting, and move that he be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier that councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Hutton, can I have confirmation of minutes, please?
Sure, Chair. I move that the minutes of the 4,725th meeting, held on Tuesday, the 31st of October 2023, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that the minute of the 4,725th meeting of council held on the 31st of October 2023 be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move into question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Owen?
To the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, Brisbane is the fastest-growing capital city in the country, and now is the time to be building better public transport and readying ourselves for more services. Can you please update the chamber on the latest in Brisbane's public transport services?
Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Chair, and through you, thank you to councillor Owen for the question. And I'm happy to share with councillor Owen that construction on our new Brisbane Metro depot at Rochedale is almost complete. Yes, out at Rochedale, Chair, we are building what will become Australia's largest electric bus depot. A state-of-the-art facility set across 10 hectares with space for 100 metros to be stabled, charged, and maintained. We are the only bus operator in the country that is building a depot of this size and scale, and it's only possible because of the commitment that this Lord Mayor and the Shrima Council have made to public transport in this city. Compare and contrast this to the state government, who many years ago announced lofty targets for bus electrification, but to date, they haven't electrified a single depot. I have no doubt, Chair, that we will have conceptualised, designed, constructed, and commissioned our metro depot, all before Minister Bailey makes any meaningful progress on zero emissions buses for Queensland residents. Chair, just like Without a Fight did in the Melbourne Cup just before, it is the Shrima Council who will be crossing the finish line first. Now, while they are tinkering, we've been hard at work getting on with the job of transitioning our public transport to zero emissions with Brisbane Metro. I was out on-site at Rochedale this morning with my good friend councillor Huang, and I'm still struck by the massive scale of this endeavour every time I go. We've installed 500 tonnes of structural steel, 25 kilometres of in-ground cabling, and 31,000 square metres of concrete pavement. Rochedale will be our first fully-electric depot, and our biggest, but it will also be our most sustainable depot. Over 2,000 solar panels will generate 1 megawatt of electricity to help power our metros and contribute to the site's five Green Star rating. Over the next few months, we'll be putting the finishing touches on the depot, and the timing couldn't be better, Chair, because the first production metros will be here by the end of the year. Rochedale won't only be home to our new fleet chair, it will also be home to a new generation of bus drivers. We have thousands of bus drivers employed with council who deliver 10,000 trips every day, which is no mean feat, but we have to keep in mind metros will run every five minutes during the peak, and they'll run 24/7. So in the lead up to metro services commencing, we will need to continue to bolster our workforce in preparation. Now, that's no easy task, Chair, because we know in the last few years, the public transport sector from around the world has faced significant challenges with bus driver recruitment and retention. But at the first sign of bus driver shortages here in Brisbane, we launched a major campaign to employ new bus drivers. I'm pleased to advise the chamber that we've now employed over 400 new drivers, which have entered the training school this year, which is a massive uplift on our usual intake, and we are expecting to hit 500 new bus drivers by the end of this year. And we're seeing the benefits, Chair. More bus drivers means more reliability in our network. Thanks to our recruitment drive, our service reliability is now topping out at 99.8%. That makes us the second-most reliable public transport offering in the entire country, only behind the Sydney Metro, which is autonomous, Chair, so pretty highly reliable. So across all fronts, there is great cause for optimism in Brisbane at the moment, and unfortunately, the only ones who aren't on board are the Labor Opposition. Just in Transport Committee this morning, we heard councillor Cassidy suggest that he talks to bus drivers all the time, and that morale in transport for Brisbane is low. Well, we know that councillor Cassidy does talk a lot to the paid RTBU officials and organisers, but he clearly hasn't been talking to bus drivers, because I was talking to some bus drivers this morning at Rochedale, and they could not be more excited to be part of the future decarbonisation of the city's transport network. They couldn't be more excited to be part of the journey that we are undertaking. That excitement is palpable, and I've got to say, morale has never been higher. And the proof is in the pudding, because if morale was low, then why would bus drivers be flocking to us by the hundreds? So our councillor Cassidy continues to shill for Labor's biggest and only donor, the RTBU, on that side of the chamber. Under the leadership of the Lord Mayor, we will continue to transform public transport in this city for the better. And if you want to know, Chair, where morale is really bad, you only have to look at the other side of the chamber, because we know that come March 17th, councillor Cassidy won't have any cause for celebration. And in fact, Chair, I think the clag truck will be rocking up to Peel Street to pick up councillor Cassidy and his mates.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you still won't come clean to admit that council employees are losing their jobs and the impact that's having on them. Employees in public space operations have told me, and I quote, "My concerns are that the majority of this casual labour was filling FTE positions that BCC haven't actively recruited or filled." So in a roundabout way, they are actually making positions redundant. So, Lord Mayor, will you admit today that sacking council staff and trying to cover it up was a mistake, and that it will affect council service delivery?
Lord Mayor?
I'll absolutely admit that we're making sensible savings to keep rates low. I restate again that if we don't make these savings now, then by the end of this financial year and the middle of next year, there will be a significant financial challenge with the cost pressures on this council. Just like there's cost pressures on the state government, just like there's cost pressures on the federal government we're hearing about, they're trying to shed a whole heap of projects, they've been talking about this in recent days. Just like there's cost pressures on business, and just like there's cost pressures on family household budgets, everyone is facing these cost challenges. Now, you can bury your head in the sand, and you can hope that this will go away, which is the Labor approach. In the end, that means that ratepayers would have to pay more. We don't take action now. And so by finding 10% savings across the budget, in a sensible way, across what is a $4 billion budget or $4.3 billion budget, we can then keep the pressure on rates low. We've been really upfront about this. We have seen just in recent days the federal treasurer talking about exactly this, the need to reduce costs at the federal level. The Labor federal treasurer has been talking about it right now, yesterday, today, and continues to talk about it. We see research that was done on a nationwide level, which asks people, what do you think the federal government should do to address inflationary and cost pressures that are on people at the moment? And you know what one of the top things was, Mr. Chair, that people suggested? Reductions in government spending. 77% of people in that survey said that government spending should be reduced. That is at the federal level, and I have no doubt it is no different at the council level or at the state level. People understand. They understand because they're facing the same pressures in their own budget. And so we've been really upfront, we need to find these savings, we need to find them in a sensible way that puts downward pressure on rates, because the alternative is higher rates under a Green Labor coalition of chaos. That is the reality. Now, when it comes to the other alternatives, taxation increases or rates increases, we've seen the Green Labor coalition of chaos announce three new taxes in three weeks. Three new taxes in three weeks. That is quite clearly their solution to every problem, a new tax. If there's a problem that arises, they propose a new tax. If there's a crisis that arises, new tax will fix it. We know that that is not the case. We know that in the end, it just means that people pay more. It means that ratepayers pay more. It means that renters will pay more because of the crazy Greens policy that was announced just yesterday. Renters will pay more. We know that under Labor and the Greens, renters will pay more, householders will pay more, ratepayers will pay more, and we're working really hard to make sure that that doesn't happen. Now, in terms of council staff, we've heard ongoing for weeks and weeks mistruths being peddled by Labor and opposition councillors. They claimed that bus drivers were under threat, when we've just heard today we've employed more than 400 new bus drivers. You cannot believe what they say. They claimed that library staff were under threat, and once again, it's been confirmed there are no casual workers in our libraries. They are ongoing council staff. And so when they make claims, you have to take it with a grain of salt, because time and time again, they've been making false claims. And so, you know, just even in the suggestion that was put forward, if there's a job vacancy that exists right now, and we choose not to fill it, is someone getting sacked? No, it's a vacant position. And I think it's a sensible thing to do to reassess whether someone extra is brought online, or whether we can make some sensible savings in that area. That's a sensible way of doing things, but the claim that was made by councillor Cassidy doesn't marry up with the facts of what's happening. And so we'll continue to look for sensible savings. We're going through the process, because it's all about keeping pressure on rates down, it's about cost of living relief, so that we can make sure that people are paying less rather than more under a Green Labor coalition of chaos.
Further questions? Councillor Huang?
Thank you. My question is to the Chair of Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, the Greens Labor coalition of chaos have been blatant in making things up when it comes to council staff. Can you please confirm once again what our sensible savings aim to achieve?
Councillor Cunningham, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks to councillor Huang for the question. Mr. Chair, with costs rising across the board, governments have a very clear choice between reducing spending or increasing taxes and charges on residents in the middle of a cost of living crisis. The choice that this administration has made is the obvious one, and we know that residents support governments reducing spending to help curb inflation. Because, Mr. Chair, we're undertaking the sensible savings now to keep rates low. We've been very clear from day one that no permanent council staff will be impacted as a result of these changes. When it comes to casuals, Mr. Chair, the claims made by both Labor and Green councillors have shown to be incredibly misleading, and they're usually based on entirely false premises. We've had Labor councillors saying our casual bus drivers were at risk, despite the Lord Mayor very clearly saying that our bus services will not change in this city. And as the Lord Mayor has just said, not only are we seeing no reduction in bus driver numbers, we've just announced 442 new recruits that have come on board this year alone. We've heard councillor Collier and councillor Massey make false claims that library casuals were at risk, even though we don't have casuals in our libraries branch. Moving on to the opposition claims that some casual staff are allegedly terminated due to the sensible savings plan. You see, Mr. Chair, casual work has always been based on demand and shift availability. However, casual contracts remain in place for the term of the contract. We know that in one particular council branch, discussions were had with a small group of three non-frontline casual staff before the Lord Mayor's announcement that due to normal workforce factors, shift availability would soon be changing. And then, as had been previously discussed, shift availability for the time being was no longer there, not because of savings needed to be found, but in fact because there was no work to do. None of those staff were terminated, Mr. Chair. Their contracts in fact remain. And what's more, one of those staff members even got offered a new contract, but they didn't accept the offer, which is entirely up to them, and which is, they are entirely entitled to do. So, Mr. Chair, for all the breathless exaggeration from those opposite here in the chamber, the facts on casuals are this: listen up. A grand total of zero, that's zero, council casuals have been terminated for the reasons purported by the opposition in the past three weeks. According to payroll records, we've seen three voluntary resignations, one case where a worker was unable to commence due to failing to obtain the necessary requirements to undertake that particular job, and one case, Mr. Chair, where the worker actually never started. I was very hesitant to go into this level of detail, but when the opposition continuously make these false claims, it must be called out, Mr. Chair. If the opposition had specific information contrary to this, they could of course write to me on a confidential basis so that it could be investigated, but if not, Mr. Chair, they're simply mischief-making. As for contractors, consultants, and contingent staff, yes, these arrangements are being reviewed and discussed with the relevant parties, including our unions, Mr. Chair. And it's entirely consistent with what governments do at all levels, all of the time. In 2020, Cameron Dick announced his plan to save $750 million, which included, quote, "reducing the use of consultancies and contractors by government with a view to ending arrangements where possible." In this year's Victorian budget, the Labor government announced that, quote, "further savings will be achieved through reductions in labor hire and consultancy expenditure." This formed part of a $3.6 billion efficiencies plan, Mr. Chair. While we look to find sensible savings to keep rates low...
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Look, I have a message from library services staff I'd like to read to you and for you to answer a question that they have, and this is what they had to say. "We are super busy in library services, but have been told there will be no new recruitments for some time. Staff are still expected to run events and run a library when we are understaffed. There is talk of cutting numbers of staff to work on Sundays. This is unfair on staff working the shift due to not enough staff, and also to those wanting to work more Sundays to boost their income. It's all bad news." So, Lord Mayor, do you concede that your announcement to cut $400 million from the budget is going to hurt council employees more than you have previously said it would?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you. All of our staff do a fantastic job, and all of our staff are busy. I would certainly expect that they would be busy, and as we've heard from councillor Cunningham, if there's no work to do, then we tend not to employ staff to do no work. And so areas that are busy right across the organisation is our expectation. We are all busy, our staff are busy, they do a fantastic job, and they do it because they're passionate about Brisbane, just like we are. When it comes to library services, it's interesting, the only, the critical thing that I heard out of that is that there is talk about changes. There is talk about changes. Well, the only people that are talking about changes are the Labor and Green councillors. They're the ones that are talking about the changes causing concern, and I'm not aware of any changes to library staff. I'm not aware of anything. And so if there's talk about it, then I think the Labor and opposition councillors should have a good hard look at themselves, because they're the ones that are causing concern. And they should be ashamed of themselves, because they used to be the party that cared for workers, and now we know... Yeah, that's long since gone. That is long since gone. And so if there's concern, then the Labor Party should stop fanning the flames, and they should actually listen in question time when it's confirmed that, you know, details about library staff that they've asked questions about have been confirmed not to be the case, details about bus drivers have been confirmed not to be the case. And so really, you know, if the question's about there's talk, well, the best way to calm that down is to stop spreading mistruths, Mr. Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, Brisbane's momentum as a city has once again made international headlines. Can you please update the chamber on the latest endorsement of our fantastic River City?
Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Hutton. And we have known for many, many years in this place that Brisbane is absolutely the best place to live, work, and play, but the rest of the world have finally opened their eyes and realising as well. For the first Time magazine's Top 50 Greatest Places now-renowned travel publication from its best places to visit for 2024. As I said, it's been fantastic for us, for people to finally realise and recognise that it's also about time that people realise we are a wonderful city to visit. And it's no accident, can I say, Brisbane is the fastest-growing capital city in the country, with people from all over Australia and around the world recognising that our city's incredible climate, lifestyle, and livability is absolutely second to none. In the lead-up to 2032, we will use the gift of the Games to introduce the world to the incredible capabilities and communities we have in Brisbane. And the exposure that comes with being a host city is absolutely priceless, just to be mentioned in the same breath as Paris and LA. And until recently, it was Tokyo, Paris, LA, Brisbane. It's elevated our city to a whole new level. When we're announced as the host city in 2021, we know that the Google search on Brisbane went through the roof in the first 24 hours. And look, we'll admit it, that was the rest of the world going, where the heck is Brisbane? But that was the whole point. They may not know where we were then, but they are now, and they're having a look, and they're realising, hey, it's a pretty sexy city to go and visit. I wouldn't mind going to see what's going on as well. And we know the more people that visit, they will know our name, and they will invest here. And we're already going about it the right way. The last few months, it is clear that Brisbane is setting the pace in Australia and around the world. As I mentioned, it started with the Time magazines being named one of the world's top places to visit, and I might add, Brisbane was the only Australian city to make that list in the Time magazine, and that was seen by more than 20 million subscribers worldwide for Time. No doubt hearing about how wonderful we are. But as a destination, Brisbane offers the best of Australia. We're the most Australian city, Lord Mayor, I've heard you say it before. We have vibrant precincts across our cities and suburbs, we have world-class dining, we have diverse cultural experience, and of course, we have the breathtaking natural wonders of beaches, to rainforests, to deserts, and everything in between. But perhaps most importantly, we know as local councillors that it's our friendly and welcoming residents that make us such an appealing place to live and visit. Brisbane is also ranked the top Australian city and 15th in the world of sporting cities, not just because we're great at hosting sporting events, but it's our grassroots community-level sports that we live and breathe in Brisbane as well. Our local sports clubs are the lifeblood of our communities, again, as every local councillor knows. We are the earliest rising city in the world, and the morning buzz is full of people enjoying our renowned outdoor lifestyle. That does not mean we don't have a solid reason to get some daylight savings happening as well in our capital city. We have made headlines across the world for our dedication to sustainability, having recently been awarded gold level by the UN Habitat under the SDG Gold Cities Initiative. And just recently, we received the Global Award for Sustainable Development of Cities at the Shanghai Global Cities Conference. That's right, Brisbane is now recognised as one of the most sustainable cities in the world. We are the most small business-friendly city in Australia, and I'm just saying the world because that makes us the most in the southern hemisphere, so contest me if it's not the world as well. And you only have to look at the calibre of the businesses that were recognised during the Lord Mayor's Business Awards to see that Brisbane's future is so bright in this space. We have overtaken Sydney as the top destination of choice for international small and medium enterprises to travel to Australia. It's called pleasure, so pleasure, travel, so when you're doing business and leisure, we are the top pleasure capital in Australia as well. There is more to do than just having fun here, you can also do your business. We have a packed major events calendar. FIFA Women's World Cup, of course, we had, we've got NRL Magic Round coming back, the Brisbane International coming back in January. We just finished the Queensland PGA with a course record, and we welcome the Australian PGA at the end of this month as well. That is real economic dividends for our city. We're experiencing a resurgence in international visitors, and it's all been under the leadership of this council, with Lord Mayor Adrian Shrima at the helm. Brisbane just keeps getting better...
Deputy Mayor, your time has expired.
...and the world agrees.
Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you'd be aware that in PSO Greenspace, there are 78 casual labor hire staff, of which 30 have been let go since you announced your budget cuts. Here's a message from one of the staff members in PSO Natural Environment. "We were identified as being a highest threat of suicide and burnout in our work area, and rapidly employed more staff to help with that workload. Now with removing casual staff, this will put us back to where we were." So, Lord Mayor, why have you put your political narrative ahead of the wellbeing and safety of council employees?
Lord Mayor?
Well, that's an appalling and outrageous claim that's being made. I reject it wholeheartedly. And, look, I mean, councillor Cassidy can produce all of the statements that he likes, but in the end, we have to find sensible savings to keep rates down for residents. And we've been very clear on how that's going to happen, and we know that councillor Cassidy...
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, we're not going to call out across the chamber, we are to listen to questions and answers in silence. Lord Mayor?
We know that councillor Cassidy is opposed to sensible savings, which means that he must be supportive of higher rates and taxes, and that is a shame. Look, in the end, that is his position, he's entitled to have that position, we have a different position.
Further questions? Councillor Lenders?
My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, this year's Valley Fiesta has now drawn to a close. Can you please update the chamber on the success of this Fiesta, including how it supports Brisbane's night-time economy and artists? Brisbane's night time economy and artists?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Landers for the question. The Shrinna Council's free and affordable events calendar is practically bursting at the seams this summer. Valley Fiesta is just one example of how the Shrinna Council is creating more to see and do for residents and visitors of Brisbane, and doing so in a way that makes it possible for everyone to enjoy what's on offer, no matter what their budget. Purse strings are tight at the moment, with the cost of living crunching down on households right across the nation. But the Shrinna Council is here to make sure that that doesn't stop you from enjoying the best of Brisbane's music scene. And that is why I was proud to join the team in opening Valley Fiesta on Friday at the King Street Food Fiesta with an all-ages event to kick off Brisbane's biggest annual party. It did try to rain on our parade, but we saw the rain off. And I think for as long as I can remember, it's always done a little bit of raining on Valley Fiesta, but it does not stop the party. The 26th Annual Valley Fiesta was not only totally free, the Shrinna Council has also worked hard to make sure that it was accessible and inclusive for all, with Ausland interpretive performances to wheelchair-accessible spaces so that everyone was able to experience the thrill of live music without barriers. So I'd like to pay a special thank you to Spinal Life Australia for working with us again this year to achieve this, and so too for all the other incredible work that Spinal Life Australia does on a day-to-day basis year round. To kick things off with a bang on Friday night, we had live music from Brisbane's best up-and-coming artists, including the ever-talented Taitu Uga, I hope I got that right, who was the talking high chief for his Samoan village, and an artist who creates and weaves culture through his fresh fusion of electronic dance music, hip-hop reggae, beatbox loop machine and traditional instruments. So this was just one of the reasons why I love the city so much. They have so many talented artists representing and celebrating their cultures in their own unique way. We also had performances from Lucy Courts, the 2022 Cube Effect alumni, and the Lord Mayor's Live Event Award winner. Lucy started the proceedings up in King Street and it was fantastic to see the crowd assembling to hear this wonderful young artist as she performed for us. We also had our homegrown Australian Maori producer, Kuzco, dropping the beat with spacious synths and broken percussion rhythms. And boy, oh boy, what a soundtrack that was to kick off the 26th Valley Fiesta. So no matter whether you're a regular Valley visitor or seeing it for the very first time, the Valley continues to deliver musical memories to last a lifetime. And Valley Fiesta allows us to do that free of charge. For more than 25 years now, Valley Fiesta has been captivating audiences and contributing to our incredible local music scene. Last year, we had more than 115 events across 24 venues showcasing 63 performers, which saw more than 400,000 music fans turn up to enjoy the free festivities. This year, we had another huge line-up of artists and headliners, including Mallrat, Midlife and Hatchy, along with a tonne of local acts. So I want to thank the Tivoli for curating the epic line-up of live acts, including Skeleton, First Beige, Jaybird Burn and the list goes on. And thank you also to Quiver for programming a blockbuster DJ line-up, including David Vesachi, Greer, Jimmy Ellis and so many more. Again, everyone was able to enjoy this massive line-up entirely for free. And what's more, it's what we did to make it all-inclusive and accessible. The Shrinna Council is proud to lead Australia's most inclusive city. And the team went above and beyond again this year in making sure that the Valley Fiesta offered a space for all residents and to enjoy what Brisbane has to offer. Festivals like Valley Fiesta contribute to our vibrant and creative city, providing more to see and do and smile about while supporting our arts and events industry. A massive thank you to all those involved in bringing this year's programme to life. Valley Fiesta is just another event in our amazing city that makes it an even better place to live, and another reason why I'm extremely proud to be part of the Shrinna Council. Just one of the ways that we're achieving and making what's fun that continues year round, we have events and festivities for all ages. So whether it's going to be from guided walks through decades-old tree giants at Sherwood Arbor Regent to the bright lights and festive sounds of the Lord Mayor's Christmas carols, Valley Fiesta just fits into that social calendar that makes so much more to see and do right across Brisbane. So we've got loads on offer for families to keep everyone happy over the holidays and we're also.
Councillor Howard, I'm sorry, your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, following your announcement of $400 million in cuts 21 days ago, staff and basic services have suffered. PPI have been asked to let go of any casuals and everyone that's on higher secondment are to move back to their substantive position. The message was that PPI staff also needed to reduce their service level across the city by stopping doing programme maintenance and to undertake a triage response to maintenance. Isn't this more evidence that your decisions have affected basic service delivery in the suburbs of Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
When we made the announcement on the sensible savings and the 10% reduction across the organisation, we made it really clear that permanent staff would not be impacted, but casual staff would be. It was very clear. And so I'm not sure why councillor Cassidy is surprised about this. There should be no surprise. We were upfront right from day one. And so this is a measured way of doing it. And the nature of casual employment is that it is cyclical. It is not a permanent ongoing arrangement. It is based on needs. And right now, the needs and requirements of the organisation have changed because we need to focus on keeping rates down for the people of Brisbane. Just like the needs of the federal government are changing when they're looking at shedding large infrastructure projects right across the nation, they need to find $33 billion worth of reductions, according to the latest figures. And so I wonder if councillor Cassidy will be railing against that? Because I remember having some debates in this place where we were ringing the alarm bells on this infrastructure review and they were saying, nothing to see here. And now suddenly, their factional leader, the treasurer, is throwing his toys out of the cot because what we've been saying for months has come true. But the reality is, every level of government is under pressure. Every business is under pressure. Every household is under pressure. There's no magic pudding here. And the only magic pudding that Labor comes up with is taxing people more, charging people more rates. And we don't want to do that. We want to keep the pressure on rates low. And so I will keep repeating this while councillor Cassidy keeps asking the same questions. The reality is, though, that we've seen, it's interesting, you know, I explain to my kids the story of the boy who cried wolf. And I remember, you know, for the four and a half years that I've been as Lord Mayor, every single week councillor Cassidy has made claims about reductions in council services and a lack of spending in the suburbs. Every single week. And, and.
Councillor Collier.
He's been caught out time and time again misleading people.
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy. Please refrain from calling out. Lord Mayor.
And so he's undermined his own credibility so badly over the years by spreading so many mistruths. It is a real shame because in the end, we've been absolutely upfront here. It's the opposite to the Labor approach. They continue to spread mistruths even today. They continue to make false claims, just like have been doing for years. Just like they have been doing for years. And if the residents of Brisbane want to know what will happen going forward, I can tell you, 90% of what we normally do will still keep happening. But there will be a 10% reduction in spending. And as I said, we've been really upfront about it. Is this, is this a permanent thing? No, it's the right thing to do right now while everyone is under pressure. Will there be changes in the future if situations improve? Absolutely. But that is what households have to do. That is what the other levels of government will have to do too. That is what businesses will have to do. And so we are making the responsible and sensible changes now to make sure that we protect the rate payers in Brisbane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions. Councillor Jenkinson.
Mr Chair, my question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Programme, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the Shrinna Council's Village Precinct Projects is all about supporting small business and creating a city of neighbourhoods. Can you please update the chamber on the latest in this programme of works?
Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Jenkinson for the question. We're investing more than $10 million over four years to revamp our iconic neighbourhood centres right across the suburbs through the Village Precinct Projects. Earlier this year, we completed the 21st Village Precinct Project with the completion of Lumley Street up at Mount Cravat and Sandgate Road, Boondal. We are unashamedly about making Brisbane suburbs even better, which is why 87% of the council's budget is dedicated to building better infrastructure and delivering better services to our suburbs. We are committed to improving the suburbs that make our city so great, and the Village Precincts projects are part of this. From Cooperoo, Camp Hill and the Corso, to Paddington, Milton and Boondal, to the beautiful Bayside Village in Manly Harbour, we're breathing new life into these local hubs that have been part of the fabric of the Brisbane community for generations. And the timing could not have been better, with more people staying close to home, shopping locally and supporting small business. Businesses excited about the new opportunities these improvements have created, including more outdoor dining areas and places to stop and linger, a far more comfortable environment for all. It's a busy period at the moment with numerous projects underway and at different stages of completion. I'm delighted to inform the chamber that Park Road Milton Village Precinct Project has now completed. At that site, the Park Road street furniture was refreshed, including three new multi-bike racks and the removal of the aging wayfinding signage. We are also creating a streetscape plaza at the corner of Park Road and Gordon Street to encourage visitors to Adam Smitty Park. These works include floating precast coloured concrete platforms with integrated LED lighting, new pavement to the street corner of the plaza, new water-drinking fountains and new shade trees, garden beds and landscaping. And I understand councillor Jenkinson also hosted an event recently to celebrate the improvements. It's a credit to the local councillor as the event was well-attended, with residents enjoying free live theatre, live music, urban sketching, face painting and games in the parks. A well-done councillor Jenkinson. I also heard that the martyr smiling for Smitty riders cycled the river loop before joining the event to remember and celebrate Adam Smitty. Mr Chair, I can also update the chamber that works at Rosalie Village have begun. This project aims to improve and enhance the centre's overall attractiveness. The amenity and safety will also be improved, as will accessibility. And it will certainly identify this key shopping location. The works include improving pedestrian thoroughfares, improved traffic signage at key locations in the precinct, installing new garden beds and additional street trees, installing council standard street furniture, including seats, rubbish bins and bike racks, and commissioning public art to enhance the precinct identity. It's all about making these areas more inviting for local businesses to set up shop or to give a boost to those existing businesses, and in turn, making it more appealing for residents to visit their local area and buy local. Each project is different with their own quirks and character, and that's the whole point. These areas offer a different experience to visiting the major shopping centres or online, as popular as these have become in recent years. They are a place to connect with community and support local businesses. Our Village Precinct projects are much more than just a facelift. They're all about kickstarting the local economy and creating a city of vibrant neighbourhoods with livable places for locals and visitors alike. Mr Chair, this is just one of the ways the Shrinna Council is making Brisbane an even better place to live, work and relax.
Thank you. And that ends question time. Councillors, we move on to the next item on the agenda, the consideration of committee reports.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much. I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move a motion.
Seconded.
We have a suspension of, a motion for a suspension of standing orders, moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. Councillor Cassidy, three minutes to the reasons why it was not submitted before one o'clock yesterday. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chair. And the motion of which, if standing orders are suspended, I'd like to move, is that the Lord Mayor apologised to staff for increasing stress and workload and eroding council's zero-harm policies through his political decisions and reverse all job cuts. This morning, I received messages from staff, including the following: anyone without a permanent position is likely to lose it. Current staff are burnt out from covering shifts and it looks like positions will not be filled. Another one I received today, PSO Natural Environment was identified as being a high threat of suicide and burnout, something the Lord Mayor just dismissed in question time.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Murphy, just give me one second. Councillor Cassidy, this was to the reasons why you or a member of your team could not submit the motion before one o'clock. Deputy Mayor, please. Before one o'clock yesterday. Now, just before you carry on, councillor Murphy, you were rising on a point of order. Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So during question time, the Lord Mayor dismissed these concerns summarily. That work area said more staff were recruited to address those issues. And now those issues are going to arise all over again because of this Lord Mayor's political decisions. We've heard as well in question time, and I heard today, that 30 casual positions in PSO Greenspace have been let go. We had about half an hour ago, the Chair of the Finance Committee saying that it was only three casuals that were no longer employed by council. And then, and then about 15 minutes later, the Lord Mayor gets up and says, well, that's right, every casual in council might go. So they're not coordinating their lines, are they, Chair?
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Thank you.
So it's a pretty.
Hang on, councillor Cassidy. I'll give you the call in a second. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So the Lord Mayor's political decisions are eroding service delivery and they are harming council workers. Now, I suppose the question is, does the LMP even care anymore?
Thank you, councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, Chair.
Just one moment, please. Can you turn your mic off and resume your seat, please, councillor Whitme? Lord Mayor, your misrepresentation.
Councillor Cassidy suggested that I'd said every single casual staff member would go. I did not say such a thing.
Noted. Thank you. Councillor Whitme, your point of order? Right, okay. We will now put the motion. It is a procedural motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Oyes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. My pleasure. Clerk, councillors, a bit of quiet, please, during division. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour and 18 against.
The procedural motion has not passed. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now move back to the consideration of committee reports. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 30th of October 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 30th of October 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
Mr Chair, before I move on to the items in front of us, you know, we hear continual mistruths being peddled. And today, we've just heard another one.
mistruths being peddled, and today we've just heard another one. The claim was made by councillor Cassidy that there were around thirty casual council workers that were let go. And what in fact...
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Strunk, no calling out across the chamber. It was clearly heard from up here. Thank you, there's no calling out across the chamber. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. What in fact has happened is that there were twenty-nine agency staff who were told that we no longer require them to do work for council. They're not council employees, they're not council casuals. They in fact were employed by an agency, and the nature of that agency work, as councillor Cassidy should well know, is that we get them to supplement our workforce on a cyclical basis. There's no guarantee of ongoing work for council, there are periods where we require agency staff and then there are periods where we don't. And they've been advised that there's no work at this point in time, they are not council staff, they are not council casuals, they are in fact agency staff. And this is where I go back to the boy who cried wolf analogy, because, you know, if councillor Cassidy wants to oppose sensible savings, he can do so, that is his right. But stick to the facts, stick to the facts, that's fine.
Point of order. Point of order, Chair. Point of order councillor Murphy.
Will the Lord Mayor take a question?
Lord Mayor, are you happy to take a question from councillor Murphy?
Well, I'm not sure if I will. Of course councillor Murphy.
Councillor Murphy, please continue.
Thanks Chair. Lord Mayor, has councillor Cassidy not also in this chamber, in this term, opposed the employment of agency staff doing council work?
Lord Mayor.
You have a really good memory councillor Murphy, in fact, he has, he's been on the record time and time again in opposing the use of agency staff. And when we stop using agency staff in this case, he's against that too. And that's what I was saying, like, stick to the facts, like, you know, we can have the debate, by all means, you can argue for higher taxes and rates, we'll argue for lower spending. Let's have the debate, but stick to the facts, stop spreading mistruths, stop concerning council workers unnecessarily. Let's have an upfront debate about the pros and cons of both approaches. You can try and justify higher rates, we know that Labour's record was...
Councillor Cassidy, just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, it's three times now I've called you out for not remaining quiet. It is a chamber of robust debate, but you are not debating, you are heckling from the sideline. Lord Mayor, you've got the call. Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Hammond.
Councillor Cassidy, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section 21.4 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001. I hereby request that you refrain from speaking loudly across the chamber unless you have the call. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mrs Chair. Look councillor Cassidy is welcome...
Always bring councillor Cassidy out loudly, you've got the call, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy is welcome to explain why higher rates would be a better option than reducing spending. He is welcome to make that case, and certainly because of their record in this place, and I know they selectively like to talk about Jim Sawley, they see him as some kind of hero figure, but they don't mention...
Just one moment, Lord Mayor, just one moment, please. Councillor Collier, councillor Whitme, we're not calling out across the chamber. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. They don't mention that he was the Lord Mayor that lifted rates six per cent or higher on no fewer than four occasions, and certainly not in conditions where there was high inflation. In fact, at the time, there was very low inflation comparison to what it is today, yet there were four occasions, four budgets where the rate increase was six per cent or higher. That's their hero, that's their mentor, that's who they look up to. And so, look, I'm happy to have that debate, you can justify higher rates for people if, you know, if you want to explain why the people of Brisbane should vote for a Labour party that delivers higher rates, you do that. But we will support sensible savings and spending reductions to keep pressure on rates down. And it's how we're able to deliver for two budgets in a row, a rate increase of less than inflation, a rate increase of less than inflation, and also prior to that, the first rate freeze in thirty-five years. And so, our record is clear, we try absolutely every year to keep rates as low as possible. We also, at the same time, try to build as much as possible as well. And even in these challenging times, we're still delivering more infrastructure in three years than Labour would deliver in a decade. And so, we are very clear about what the focus should be, and it should be about building as much as we can while keeping rates low, it should be about providing the quality of services that people expect but keeping rates low, and that's what we'll continue to focus on. In front of us, sorry, going to the usual lighting up of assets that I update people on, last night, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge City Call in Redcliffe Place were lit up in orange to support Colour of the World Orange Day. This day focuses on complex regional pain syndrome, which is a prolonged pain that can occur following surgery, trauma, stroke or heart attack. Tonight, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Redcliffe Place will be lit up in green to support Lung Cancer Awareness Month, runs in November every year, and obviously we're keen once again to support this awareness initiative. On Thursday night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in purple for the Queensland Brain Institute's twentieth anniversary. Brain disorders account for over twenty per cent of the burden of disease in Australia, and the institute does amazing work every day at the University of Queensland to help solve and find new solutions and cures for brain-related diseases. Also tonight, our assets will be lit up in purple for the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Annual Christmas Appeal. And this is something that both myself and Nina and the trustees of the charitable trust, including councillor Adam Allen, are very passionate about, and something where we know the need continues to grow in the community with costs of living pressures and housing pressures. And so, this year's Christmas appeal will be just as important, if not more important, than any year that we've faced. And so, we thank the residents who already give generously through their rates, we thank the donors who support the trust in other ways, and there are many of them, we thank those philanthropists who also donate to the trust, and we also are keen to let the wider community know about the great work that the trust is doing in supporting the frontline charities and distributing significant grants each and every year, and we want to do that again in the lead up to Christmas. One of the other things that the trust does in partnership with Bloomberg Inc. is the Christmas Toy Drive, where Bloomberg Inc. supports, or provides toys, which are then packaged up for many of the charities across Brisbane who work with children. And these toys are given to families or children in situations where they would maybe receive nothing at Christmas. And so, this is a wonderful thing and something that we'll continue to support this year, and I would encourage everyone to get involved in supporting the Lord Mayor's Charitable Trust Annual Christmas Appeal. On Friday and Saturday night, all our assets will be lit up in red for Remembrance Day, and obviously that marks the anniversary of the armistice that ended the fighting in World War One. It's a highly important day in our national calendar, not only in Australia but in other parts of the world as well, and we'll be commemorating Remembrance Day together. On Sunday night, our assets will be lit up in orange again, this time to support cervical cancer awareness. Over nine hundred women have been diagnosed with cervical cancer this year alone, and the Awareness Week encourages women to look into the forms of protection, including vaccination and screening options. Now, we've all been, I think, grateful to see some much-wanted rainfall in recent days, given the dry conditions that we've experienced and the concerns about bushfires burning in other parts of Queensland. And so, that rainfall is welcome, and it's come at just the right time as well, but having said that, we continue to make sure we are as prepared as possible for what might lay ahead in terms of the season ahead. It could dry out again quite quickly, and so we continue to prepare. Last week, thirteen point four hectares of vegetation works were completed throughout Cannon Hill Bushland, Carrawatha Forest, Archerfield Wetlands Park, Drew Vale Bushland, Tinchi Tambor Wetlands, Tin Galpa Creek Reserve. This week, another fifteen hectares is being completed, bringing the year-to-date total of over two thousand hectares across the city of vegetation works in preparing us for the summer season. Last week, there was also almost five kilometres of track and trail maintenance completed at Colo Bushland Reserve, Prout Road Park in Burbank, JC Trotter Park and Drew Vale Bushland as well. And the items in front of us, item A, the Contracts and Tendering Report for September 2023, we see eighty-two contracts being awarded, and we see thirty-seven, sorry, I'm reading from the wrong section here, thirty-seven out of the forty-eight contracts are being awarded to local suppliers, which is seventy-seven per cent.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, seconded.
We have a move for extension moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. So, in this particular month, seventy-seven per cent of contracts went to local suppliers, but overall across the financial year, we're certainly meeting our target of at least eighty per cent of contracts to be awarded to local suppliers. And so far, across the year, there's been four hundred and thirty-one million dollars worth of contracts awarded to local suppliers in South East Queensland, which is a great outcome. There's some great contracts coming through, and one that I'm particularly passionate about is the package three of the Sun Safe Suburban Playground Programme. This is one that we announced middle of last year, and so it's geared up, this is package three of the programme since it was announced last year. And it was interesting, it was brought to my attention that one of the Labour councillors, and this is the boy who cried wolf story yet again, except it was a girl who cried wolf, claimed that the LMP administration had promised to put shade over playgrounds years ago, years ago, this was the language used, years ago, it was actually the middle of last year that we announced the multi-year programme to put shade over every playground. And so, already we're into package three, we're rolling ahead with this programme. And so you cannot trust what they say, you just cannot trust a thing that they say. Time and time again, they're caught out bending the truth, misrepresenting the facts. So years ago, should have read last year, middle of last year, we started a programme to put shade over every playground. And it was a multi-year programme, which we announced at the time, and so we'll continue rolling out shade sales. The playgrounds right across the city in every ward are being covered, and so look forward to seeing this programme continue, it's a great one, and it's one I think the people of Brisbane appreciate and support too. We are sadly in Queensland the skin cancer capital of the world, and so, you know, playgrounds are places that kids spend a lot of time, and, you know, this is an important thing at that stage in their life in particular, because getting sunburnt early in life can have lifelong ramifications. And so, playgrounds are a great place to make sure we have protection, and obviously we're doing our part in that space. Also, as part of these contracts, the installation of high-voltage Brisbane Metro end-of-trip charging facilities, and the installation of these charging ports at the Metro Depot is well underway. And the contract also includes charging locations at Ernie's Roundabout in Hurston, which is down near the Royal Brisbane Women's Hospital, Countess Street in Petrie Terrace, Sir William McGregor Drive in Dutton Park, which is across the bridge from UQ, and those facilities are part of this contract, councillor Murphy was obviously discussing those facilities earlier. Incredible technology being used here, to be able to charge a vehicle the size of a Brisbane Metro vehicle in six minutes with a flash charge, you can imagine the amount of energy that goes into that and the technology required. And so there's a combination of fast flash charging, six-minute charges that allows the vehicles then to get back on the road, and then overnight charging at the depot as well, and slow charging at the depot. So a great, a great series of contracts which show that we are, as councillor Murphy said, leading the way when it comes to electrification in Australia. There is nothing else like this anywhere in Australia, no one is advanced when it comes to building a fully electric depot for up to a hundred vehicles down the track. This is an Australia first, it's the largest project of its kind, and it's something we should all be proud of. Item B is the lease of council land to community organisations, seeking council approval to progress with lease negotiations with a number of community organisations. In accordance with section 217 of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012, council cannot enter into a valuable non-current asset contract unless it first invites written tenders for the contract or offers the valuable non-current asset for sale by auction. And so, section 226 of the regulation provides a number of exemptions that council may apply to the disposal of an interest in land, other than by way of a tender or auction. And obviously, these are community organisation leases that we're talking about, where in most cases, this is an organisation that has a current lease, and we're talking about a lease renewal or a lease extension, and the intent here is to have this approval so that we can enter into those lease arrangements and negotiations and finalise the lease for these organisations. So there's forty-two organisations operating from council space that we want to seek approval for today to sort those leases out, and once again, I hope we get the support of councillors in this chamber.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, further speakers. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much, Chair. Can I ask that item A and B be taken seriatem for voting, please?
A and B taken seriatem, noted, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. So, first of all, on the Contracts and Tendering Report for September, we're of course at day twenty-one of this LMP Mayor's savage cuts, one point six million dollars a day that is being cut from suburban projects and services, and that'll add up to four hundred million dollars in staff cuts, project cuts and cuts to services in the suburbs of Brisbane. As we are finally starting to uncover through question time today, the Lord Mayor is finally admitting that he is okay with shedding agency staff, temporary staff that are doing ongoing council work. So we know that there are over one thousand temporary contract staff that are working in council, well, they were up until twenty-one days ago doing ongoing full-time equivalent work. We know that the LMP administration, led by councillor Adrian Shrunna, decided to employ temporary casual labour hire staff to fulfil full-time equivalent positions within council to do basic ongoing work, whether that's in the public space operations and maintaining our parks and gardens, whether that's clearing drains out, whether that's maintaining memorials in parks, trimming trees, all those sorts of things that you would expect a council to do. People are paying their rates and expecting council services. It's the basics, it is the basics. And what we know is that there were seventy-eight positions within PSO green space...
Just one moment councillor Cassidy, point of order deputy mayor.
The relevance of the leader of the opposition's debate to Contracts and Tendering and the community organisation leases, he's not allowed to go around the world.
Noted. Councillor Cassidy, just a reminder that we are to speak on the items before us, so we are speaking, you're speaking on item A.
Yeah, thank, yes, thank you Chair. So...
Thank you.
On item A here, we know that we're sort of, we've seen these contracts come through month to month and again before us today for more and more of this basic work to be contracted out, and also increasing use of agency labour where they should be permanent, full-time employees of Brisbane City Council whose jobs would be safe, even under the LMP apparently. Even under the LMP, they claimed that they wouldn't sack full-time staff, they only sacked the thousand staff that work in council on temporary contracts that perform full-time equivalent duties. Bit of contract here, number seventeen, Chair, contract seventeen for quantity surveying and estimating services. That's an important one, and quantity surveying is an important function... That's an important one, and quantity surveying is an important function that council.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
I'm wondering whether councillor Cassidy will take a question.
Councillor Cassidy, would you care to take a question?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, councillor Cassidy would like to hear your question.
My question is if by some bizarre anomaly in the world that the leader of the opposition became the leader of the administration, would he pay council staff to do nothing if there was nothing to do on the ground?
Councillor Cassidy.
Whoa. I'll take, yeah, thank you very much. In answering that question, I will just, I need to just absorb the fact that the deputy mayor of Brisbane thinks that there is a whole bunch of council staff sitting around there doing nothing at the moment.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Question. He said that on a contract.
Councillor Cassidy, no. Councillor Collier, definitely not.
What about the deputy mayor?
I'm getting around to that.
Okay.
And councillor Whitby, no. No speaking until you've been given the call, deputy mayor.
It was a misrepresentation.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much, Chair. So the position of the LMP now, and this is on record, is that they believe that there's not enough work for the council workforce to perform.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Point of order, deputy mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Well, look, I'll pose a question, and the deputy mayor can answer this when she gets up to enter the debate on contracts and tendering. What area of council do you think there are surplus staff at the moment? I understand, I understand if the LMP cut back on services. If they stop doing maintenance, if they stop clearing drains, they stop doing upgrades, they stop doing park work, they stop resurfacing roads, all those sorts of stuff. If the LMP can stop projects, I understand that there will be less need for staff. But therein lies the problem. That's what this LMP administration is doing. They are cutting services, they are cutting projects.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Point of order, deputy mayor.
Councillor Cassidy's debate has nothing to do with the two items before us in this report.
Just one, councillor Collier, you can think it, don't vocalise it, otherwise I will give you a warning. Councillor Cassidy, you had asked the deputy mayor to respond to that question when she goes around her world. Are you still providing information for that question, or have you moved back?
No, I'm still answering the question.
Right, so are you moving back on to contract seventeen?
No, I'm answering the question that was posed to me. I don't know, is there a time limit on questions within debate?
No, 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 you've got, you've got ten minutes.
I'm still answering the deputy mayor's question.
Please, resume.
Thank you. So the LMP are cutting projects in the suburbs.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
The LMP are cutting services.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Point of order, deputy mayor.
My question was, would he pay people to do nothing?
Councillor Cassidy can accept, councillor Cassidy can either answer the question or not. We are not actually in question time. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. In answering the deputy mayor's question, the LMP's position is to cut projects, is to cut council services, and is to sack staff. We know that they are sacking agency staff, and we know they're sacking council staff.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Point of order, deputy mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented for third time.
Noted. Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thank you. So by the Chair of the Finance Committee's admission, that they are sacking council employees.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Point of order, deputy mayor.
I think it's an act of disorder to not follow your instruction to go back to the report. I did not ask about sackings. He has finished answering my question. I ask you to bring him back to the report.
Noted. Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, I will draw you back to the report.
I believe, point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
I believe the deputy mayor's continual interjections and points of order, of which you have an upheld, is an act of disorder, and ask for your ruling on that.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. The deputy mayor has actually made three points of misrepresentation that I'm assuming that she will address once you finish speaking. Please continue, you've got the call.
There was a lot more than that, and the record will show. So contract seventeen for quantity surveying and estimating services, this is a really important thing that this LMP administration can't do because they don't employ quantity surveyors within council. They've hollowed out council's engineering ability across the organisation to be able to manage projects. And we've seen some devastating effects of that. We think back to the hundred million dollar blowout in Kingsborough Smith Drive because that work wasn't done ahead of the contracts being issued. And an entire company went broke and had to go into liquidation because this administration couldn't manage a project. Maybe if the Victoria Park project had proper quantity surveying done, we wouldn't have seen the blowout from eighty-three million dollars to a hundred and forty-one million dollars. And perhaps if this LMP administration employed some quantity surveyors, they would have been able to keep the Metro project at nine hundred and forty-four million as promised, rather than that blowing out to one point seven billion dollars. The list goes on and on and on. But instead of employing people directly to do this work, and to the deputy mayor's point earlier, there is work that needs to be done, but instead of employing people to do it, they put them on short-term contracts. And contract seventeen before us today is an example of that one as well. Moving on, Chair, to, I mean, contract eighteen, thirty million dollars for an IT contract. That would send shockwaves, shockwaves through every rate payer's hip pocket when they see a large IT contract being entered into by this Lord Mayor. This Lord Mayor entered into the contract with Tech One. How much did that cost ratepayers? I think it was fifty, over fifty million dollars in damages for nothing. And we're seeing the LMP administration enter into thirty million dollars' worth of IT contracts today. We are very worried. We are very worried about blowouts on that one because all of the IT contracts this LMP administration has entered into have along the way added to the blowouts on this Lord Mayor's watch that have now led to staff sackings, to projects being cancelled, and to service delivery suffering in the suburbs of Brisbane. And we've got another one here, Chair, and contract twenty before us today, landscape maintenance services for council facilities. Now, this isn't for, these are council-owned facilities, the council's running, we presume. And this administration, this LMP administration is contracting out that work. So at the same time, the Lord Mayor is saying to all of the divisions within council, you have to stop using contractors to provide work, he's entering into a five-and-a-half million dollar contract in the schedule of rates to landscape at council-owned facilities. So obviously, this work has been planned out. Obviously, within council, someone has figured out exactly what landscaping needs to be done because when they put the request for tender out, they've put those specifications in there. So why don't we employ those people in council? That's ongoing basic work. I know, I know why we don't because this LMP mayor, councillor Schrinner, has made it very clear over the years that he doesn't value permanent ongoing work. He likes to contract things out, even if they are ongoing work. That's the LMP way. So the mismanagement of this LMP administration is before us, before us today, before us every day. And the fact that they are sacking staff, putting pressure on divisions like library services and PSO Green Space to stop delivering services and yet entering into more contracts is inconceivable.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Move for an extension.
Second.
Move for extension for councillor Cassidy, moved by councillor Collier, seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much, Chair. Moving on to the lease of land to community organisations, this is something we will support, and it's good news for these organisations, and important for those community organisations, service organisations, sporting clubs, to have support out in the community, to have a lease site. We've been very clear about our concerns around the lack of support after the lease is signed that these organisations get, but we do agree that they should enter into leases. So we agree with this item before us today. I remember a few years ago, the trend, this is when I was back on the Lifestyle and Community Services Committee in a previous term of council, we were told the trend was to extend leases beyond the shorter term, stop having four-year leases as the default, and try to get more and more organisations on ten-year leases so they have more certainty about what they are going to do into the future, around applying for grants, around saving for the future and providing services. But I just don't see that as a reality under this administration. I mean, that was a great idea that came from officers within the division and said that they wanted to see more support. But clearly, everywhere we see this, whether it's staff trying to deliver services in libraries or out in the field through PPI or PSO Green Space, those staff are trying to work really hard. But the barrier they are coming up against is this LMP administration. Time and time again, the political leadership of this LMP council is getting in the way. We would love to have seen organisations like the Safford Bowls Club be awarded to a community organisation and be on this list before us today. But, you know, that community wasn't afforded that opportunity, of course, as we know. We want to see more investment in community and sporting clubs because as we approach the Olympics in twenty thirty-two, the community benefits should be immense. Not just in sporting clubs that are Olympic sports, sporting clubs that aren't Olympic sports, community service organisations as well that support the community. Council's role in delivering a legacy for twenty thirty-two should be a generational investment in community and sporting clubs, but we just don't see that. We see a business-as-usual approach from this LMP administration. We see items come through that leases are just rolled over, re-signed. The same old conditions are put on community organisations, same old, same old, as we keep rolling through the motions of this LMP administration. You know, you understand why. In the beginning of twenty years, they've run out of puff, they've run out of ideas, they've run out of energy.
Councillor Cassidy, can I draw you back to item B, please?
Leases to community organisations, yeah, thank you very much, Chair. So we know that the support for community organisations that lease off council leaves a lot to be desired. There is, there's other councils that have different models. They are not right for a council the size of Brisbane, but there has to be a better way. There has to be more support for that. And you can't have an organisation that is run on Bunnings barbecues and raffles through a footy season left to try and find three or four hundred thousand dollars to upgrade their change rooms to allow female participation because this administration won't dip into the coffers to help them. I mean, they, at the same time, they look at a council budget that allocates a hundred and forty-one million dollars to the Victoria Park project, but that footy club cannot scrape together enough money to retrofit a fifty-year-old building that's owned by council for female change facilities. So something has to change. While the LMP are in charge, nothing will change come March next year. There is change coming right around Brisbane, and there is a choice for people to make. And the business-as-usual approach we see from this LMP administration, I think, will be tossed out.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Deputy Mayor, your three points of misrepresentation, please.
Sorry. Firstly, no, I do not think staff are sitting around doing nothing. Secondly, no, it is not that there is not enough work, but that if there is a contract and the contract for the project is completed, contract workers are released. And thirdly, we are not sacking staff.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Are there further speakers? Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak briefly in support of item B, where council is proposing to renew existing leases on land used by community groups for sport, recreation, and cultural purposes. Three of the organisations that will benefit from today's decision are in my ward. And I'd like to touch briefly on each of them and commend the great work that they're doing locally. They are the Moghl Junior Australian Football Club, the Royal Queensland Lawn Tennis Association, and the Scout Association of Queensland. Both the Moghl Junior Football Club, better known as the Mustangs, and the Lawn Tennis Association are based at the Moghl District Sports Park. The decision by the Quirk Liberal administration, with very strong advocacy by the former Pullenbale Ward councillor Margaret DeWitt to invest in the development of the Moghl District Sports Park, showed wonderful foresight at the time, and this facility continues to be a great asset in the Moghl and Belbari communities. Excuse me. Chair, I want to single out the Moghl Mustangs president, Matt Keiker, whose family moved from Victoria to the Moghl area a couple of years ago and immediately became involved in the club. Like many expat Victorians, Matt is passionate about Australian football and is actively promoting children to play the great game. And to pardon the pun, he's kicking some serious goals. Last year, there were fifty-three participants in community oz-kick. That number grew by eleven percent in twenty twenty-three, with sixteen of them being young girls. Likewise with superstars, last year, there were seven participants. This year, there were twenty-eight, with eleven of them female. And then in the juniors, the number of participants increased from thirty-three to sixty, an almost one-hundred percent increase with the number of teams expanded from three to five. Local businesses are now seeing the benefits of being associated with the Mustangs. From zero sponsors in twenty twenty-two, they now have eight on board, and I expect that number to grow. Chair, likewise with the tennis courts at the Moghl District Sports Park. The Lawn Tennis Association continues to secure strong bookings of the courts, whether it's for schools, competition, or social use. Extending that lease will provide continuity, but more important, it is ensuring that large numbers of local residents are playing tennis as part of an active and healthy lifestyle. And finally, the Karana Down Scout Group located at Coopie Park, Tendere Way. The scouting movement in Australia began in nineteen hundred and eight and has a proud history of teaching young boys, and these days, girls, a range of skills and disciplines that continue to serve them well through life. Chair, I know that you have a strong association with scouts in your ward, as does councillor Landers, and I do in ours. And my scout supporter scarf hangs proudly in my office, and I'm always happy and available to help my three local scout groups. I was both a Cub and scout in my youth, and when I see the scouts of today are able to do, I wish I had paid more attention. That said, anything we can do to support what is now the world's largest youth organisation can only be a good thing, and I support this recommendation before us today.
Thank you, councillor Adaman. Further speakers? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. I also rise to speak about item B, and in particular, the support from my local community groups, the Tingalpa Model Aero Club and the Belmorel Cycling Club. Both of these clubs are well organised and an absolute dream to work with. The Belmorel Cycling Club were instrumental in helping council to design the Brisbane International Cycle Park at the Murray Recreation Reserve. The new facility will be a huge benefit in helping our up-and-coming cyclists and BMX riders in the twenty thirty-two Olympics. The club and community are so excited for this facility to open, and they can't wait to open it with the Lord Mayor and the committee next year. I also wanted to offer my support to the Tingalpa Model Aero Club for their lease. They are the only aero club in Brisbane, and they have a very strong community spirit, and they do so much more than flying planes. They absolutely love to go on camping trips, social trips at the club as well, and they host a large number of other aero clubs at there to share their experiences, and they have a great time. I love visiting them. But over the last four years, I've worked extensively with both clubs to put on events in the Doughboy Ward. We've always held them at the Murray Recreation Reserve, and we recently had to move them because of the upgrades to the Manipi Parklands, and we worked with the Tingalpa Model Aero Club this year, and they were a dream to work with. So I think we found ourselves a new home, but I'm really grateful that both of these clubs have an enormous community spirit. They're really, really well-run and a dream to work with, and I recommend this to the chamber also. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atwood. Are there any further speakers? There being no writer reply, we will now put item A of the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We'll now put.
Division. Division.
I've already called the vote, councillor Cassidy. I'd actually moved on to item B when you called division. Okay, okay. No, we're happy to take a division. We've got division called by councillor Cassidy, and I think it was seconded by councillor Strunk. Thank you. All those, sorry. We've got division called by Counselor Cassidy, and I think it was seconded by Counselor Strunk. Thank you. All those, uh... Sorry, ayes to my left, noes to my right, other way around. Clarks, please ring the bells, yes. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and five abstentions.
Item A has passed. Councillors, we will now put item B. All those in fa-, uh, item B, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to, but before we do, can I just take a moment to acknowledge our former councillor in the gallery, Norm Wyndham. Norm, welcome back to, back to the chamber. Deputy Mayor, economic development and Brisbane 2032 Olympics.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 31st of October 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 31st of October 2023 be adopted.
Point of order, Chair.
Sorry, Counselor Collier, your point of order.
I move that the motion currently lying on the table, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge come off the table for debate.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a procedural motion to take a motion off the table, and the motion reads that Brisbane City Council commits to urgently installing the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in addition to the Australian flag. And that was moved by former councillor Cook and seconded by councillor Cassidy. All those in favour of taking the motion off the table say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
Noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Counselor Cassidy and seconded by Counselor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. I got it right that time.
Councillors, please, a bit of quiet in division. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being five in favour and 17 against.
Councillors, the procedural motion has not passed. Please resume your seat. Councillors, you can resume your seats. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I've got a double whammy this afternoon on the Business Hub because we love it so much. It was the report last week. But before that, I do want to actually talk about what's been happening and what's coming up in the Business Hub as I do each week. This week, on the 14th of November, which is next Tuesday, we have How to Market Your Business Masterclass. So that is on from 9:30 to 11:30 AM. It is being run with our partner expert, Staunch Digital. And it's a comprehensive workshop designed to be the point without the fluff. So led by a marketing expert, it will provide you actionable strategies and invaluable insights to take your marketing to the next level. So fantastic opportunities if you've got businesses that are starting out in your community to get them along to that next Tuesday. We've also got some feedback over recent events. How to Write a Great Grant submission, it was the Women in Business edition. And some of the feedback was it was so impressed with the event, the space, and everyone working there was so helpful. We also got fantastic insightful help from our team for not only your upcoming $5,000 Women in Business grant, but also for other grants in the future. Much appreciated, thank you. The speakers were really helpful. Nikki assisted me with specific questions after the event and followed up with a solution. So that's the type of feedback we love to hear. We are helping people, we're particularly helping women in business because we know that less than 40% of our local small to medium enterprises are run by women. And there's a great hot Winham, not run by Winham either, but run by women. We'll be running Winham soon. But, but we are trying to encourage women now with the flexibility as of the hours and the opportunity and digital innovation to get into business if they ever thought they were interested, and giving them that support as well. Last week's presentation was on the Business Hub because it was our third birthday. Can you believe that, Lord Mayor? Anniversary, third birthday of the Business Hub. And I just have to go through some of the actual statistics. In three years, 370 workshops and events, over 400 facilitators, 92% participant satisfaction, 445 mentoring sessions with over 90 mentors, with 100% satisfaction from our participants. 12,950 unique businesses supported, 23,000 total visitors to the hub, including 12,100 using the co-working space and 10,900 event attendees. We've had over 86,300 website visits and 38,790 online subscribers. So whether you can come in person or you can come online, there is something for everybody. And I encourage all councillors to please promote this fantastic resource to your businesses right throughout the city. We can definitely speak to them, the question in committee last week. What if your head's down and working too hard, you can't get into the city? We've also got our ED team with our business liaison officers out there to help people in the chambers and in their suburbs as well. I recommend the report to chambers, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. And just on the presentation, the Brisbane Business Hub, and to what Counselor Adams just mentioned then, we did have a discussion around the support the Brisbane, the Brisbane Business Hub can or can't, and often doesn't, provide to small suburban businesses. And I raise these issues, as Counselor Adams has alluded to there, in that a lot of, the bulk of Brisbane's small businesses that might otherwise like some support from council, whether it's to keep the doors open, whether it's to expand their operations and diversify in a difficult economy, aren't getting the support they need from council to do that. And we had a discussion that there are some online options and things like that. But I went and had a discussion about the Brisbane Business Hub with a local business, with the sort of, you know, trying to do the right thing and extol its virtues to this small business owner in my ward. And just in that short conversation that I had with that business owner, I learnt some amazing things about the kind of support they would love to get from council but simply aren't. They pay their footpath dining permit, they have the area marked out and pay for it. It's pretty extensive for a small cafe. But the footpath's so damaged there that an elderly resident recently tripped over and broke bones, had to be taken away in an ambulance. Council came and looked at it and said that should be fixed soon. It's still not fixed, still not fixed today. They tried to diversify into selling some items that they produce in their commercial kitchen, their approved kitchen by council at markets. And they were told they'd have to pay, it's close to $1,000 for a market, a market permit, where across the bridge in the Moreton Bay Regional Council, it's half that, it's half the price. So that meant that business owner couldn't make that commitment to diversify their business. And another one was their food licence. When they bought the business a couple of years ago, and their first inspection occurred, of course, which it does, doing the new food licence, and they were marked from a five down to a three-
Just give me one moment. Counselor Hammond and Counselor Wolf, if you would like to engage in conversation, can you please take yourself to the antechamber? Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. They were marked down to three stars because there was a non-compliant front counter, it needed a sink in it. So this new owner of the business spent tens of thousands of dollars immediately rectifying it. Council came back and said, great, it's signed off, you are totally compliant, but you're stuck on a three-star rating for another two years. They couldn't put them back to a three, uh, to a five-star rating because they had to work their way each year through another star. And then they were told that they could go to the next star in the next 12 months, get another inspection. 18 months has passed, and they haven't had that inspection to progress through that star rating. And why that's important, why that's important is-
Just one moment, Counselor Cassidy, point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I'm happy to respond to this, but the report, again, Counselor Cassidy, very clear rules, is about the third year anniversary of the Business Hub.
Thank you.
This is council-
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, thank you. You've made your point. Counselor Cassidy, I'll draw you back to relevance, item A, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. So the support that the Business Hub could provide this business, who, it's a husband and wife operation, employing people locally as well, they're just not getting that support through the Business Hub. They're paying more, so when they're stuck on a three-star rating, their food licence fees are much higher. And, but they're left languished for 18 months, start on that, that three-star rating. They're not progressing to the four and the five-star rating, even though they met all of the requirements of council. So when, when the deputy mayor gets up and, and, you know, talks about the lobster lunches and the champagne and oysters and things like that, and the Business Hub supporting all of these entrepreneurs in Brisbane and venture capitalists and inventors and whatnot, they have totally forgotten the suburbs, totally, totally forgotten the suburbs. This guy gets to the cafe at four in the morning, I met him there at three o'clock in the afternoon, still mopping the floors, and just wants some support from council to be able to progress through some very simple things, to be able to continue to put food on his own table and employ people in the local community. And what does he get from this LMP administration? Absolutely nothing.
Further speakers? No, no one rising. Deputy Mayor, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Cassidy, through you, Mr. Chair, has been in this place for eight years. And I'm so glad to see he finally got out of his office and spoke to a local business. Nice change. Apparently he spoke to a bus driver, but I call hogwash on that. I think he spoke to a union member that represents the bus drivers. But this is the Food Safety Act that we need to deal with, which, wait to see what's coming. But the Eat Safe is there for a reason. Now, this is not to do with the hub. Let's talk about the hub. Third year anniversary. I've got four sections across economic development that Counselor Cassidy still doesn't even recognise because he says, oh, maybe she does this and maybe she does that. But Eat Safe, a well-recognised, award-winning programme that we developed in council, which is done through four or five other councils because it was such a good programme, actually is about the safety of food. It's not about whether your food's good, it's not whether about-
Just one moment, Counselor Cassidy, there's no calling out across the chamber. Deputy Mayor.
It's not whether your food is great or good or tasty or your service is superlative. It is about food safety. And we make no apologies for the hardest-working cafe or the laziest cafe not getting a star that they don't deserve if they haven't complied with the food safety regulations. What I just heard there is that they work hard, so give them a food safety rating. That's what I heard. That is outrageous. But since Counselor Cassidy has just woken up to this fact, that is about food safety. And as for no support through the suburbs, again, as I explained last week, it will be good, Counselor Cassidy. I'll take your shout across the chambers. How about you have Counselor Watme about how, Whitme, sorry, oh, I don't know. Alex Gibney told me anyway, she was there last Thursday. The growing precincts together that we launched through ED last week in Winham, with the local businesses that came along, and how much they enjoyed the support from council.
Just one moment, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Whitme, you know that that's inappropriate and highly unprofessional. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Well, obviously Counselor Whitme is not speaking to the same people that Alex Gibney is. So lucky, after March next year, the Business Development Officer and local business person, former local business person will be down there in Winham, supporting the businesses. As we were in Sandgate through all of the work that we did in their precinct down there, as we were through Morningside when we did the precincts development and local business partnership initiatives down there, we are on the ground. If there is issues with the footpath, that is something that should be raised immediately. And I hope Counselor Cassidy didn't just chuck it on Facebook, but did actually report it to council officers or the chair. But it's not the Business Hub that manages the footpaths. And for him to say that we don't support businesses because there's something wrong with the footpath is outrageous. As I said again, I'm glad that Counselor Cassidy finally got to see one of his local businesses.
Just one moment, Deputy Mayor, just one moment, just one moment. Deputy Mayor.
I've been to coffee with businesses in Sandgate, and you know what they tell me? Their councillor doesn't care about local business. He played political games with the neighbourhood plan, then changed his mind after the election. The state member ever said, oh, that was just politics, Krista, now we'll have some density. Outrageous, outrageous hypocrisy from these people who say they support local business, but wouldn't know how to make their way out of a paper bag if they were asked. Three weeks, three taxes. What do you think that's doing to the people of Brisbane? I commend the report on the third anniversary of the Business Hub to the chamber.
We will now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division, seconded.
Division called by the deputy mayor and Counselor Hutton. Councillors, ayes to my right, noes to my left, and we will have the division in silence, thank you. Please ring the bells. Those pretzels aren't making you thirsty, are they, Counselor Massey? Billy's keeping the water topped up. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the vote being 23 in favour.
Councillors, the vote is unanimous. Please return to your seats. Counselor Murphy, Transport Committee, please.
Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 31st of October 2023 be adopted. Seconded.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Murphy and seconded by Counselor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 31st of October 2023 be adopted. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week in Transport Committee, you had a presentation on the Brisbane Metro Management System, or BMMs. Now, I haven't talked about this at great length at all in the chamber ever because it's an IT system and IT project, and, you know, those can be pretty boring at best of times, Chair. But, look, we know, we know that Metro will modernise public transport in the city. We know it's going to really help us to decarbonise public transport. But the project isn't just about delivering vehicles or infrastructure upgrades. It's also about some serious smarts and intelligence going on behind the scenes. So it might not sound flashy, but the BMMs is actually part of, well, it's one of the parts of the Brisbane Metro project that actually I'm personally looking most forward to because it will transform the operational performance of the network and it will provide a world-class experience for the passenger. And that is, I think, a really, really important thing. So this system pulls together data from the whole transport ecosystem, so metro vehicles. It gets data from TransLink, it receives information from the GoCard system, the new GoCard system, information from the depot, from our bus scheduling system. GoCard system, information from the depot, from our bus scheduling system, HASTUS, the, the network control centre, and the SCADA system, which controls the battery charging and the state of charge for all of our vehicles, which is working remotely all the time on all our vehicles, and in fact, I'm advised, is even enabled on the vehicles that are currently on their way to Australia, to arrive here, to enter commissioning. So this B M M S is all about bringing together all of this information into a central system to give us a holistic view of our operations. So it will help us to better respond to incidents on the network and to feed that information directly into drivers, passengers and network controllers. It'll help us manage headway on our metro vehicles, not something we thought would necessarily be possible at the start of the project. We've worked very carefully and collaboratively with Translink to be able to make sure we can manage headway on our metro vehicles, which is all about speeding them up or slowing them down with intolerances to make sure that they're arriving at a station at the right time that they need to be. The B M M S is also what facilitates our onboard route displays and our next stop announcements as well. So at busway stations like King George Square and the Cultural Centre station, we'll be implementing intelligent transport systems to provide customers with information and accurate real-time ETAs, as well as better platform legibility. And in fact, our metro vehicles will be running on an entirely different system than the rest of the Translink network, which provides a much better accuracy. So sometimes you'll see at a bus stop, bus arriving in two minutes and then it'll arrive in thirty seconds, well, it won't be like that with the metro, it will say, you know, thirty seconds for metro, it'll be there within thirty seconds. So it'll be really highly accurate data that will be coming from this solution. We know that this will be a world-class solution because this solution's being implemented by a world-class company, Indra, who have worked, as I mentioned, when this contract came through many months ago, now by over a hundred transport operators across twenty-three countries, cities that you would know, Chair, like London, Sydney, Dublin, not sure if it's being used in Paris or Tokyo, but certainly some, some big names there, Transport for London use Indra almost exclusively. Most importantly, Chair, the BMMS is being delivered on time and on schedule, so it is being delivered and executed as planned. That is obviously in stark contrast to some of the other IT projects we've witnessed in the transport space in this state, Chair, and a good example of that is smart ticketing, which was meant to roll out in twenty nineteen, then it was meant to roll out in twenty twenty, then it was meant to roll out in twenty twenty-one, then it was meant to roll out in twenty twenty-two, now we're in twenty twenty-three, we're almost at the end of twenty twenty-three, and I'm pretty confident, Chair, that we'll still be seeing smart ticketing rolling out in, in twenty twenty-four as well. The longest rollout, well, funnily enough, I'll take that interjection from the Lord Mayor, Chair, he asked, who got smart ticketing last? And of course, the answer is Brisbane City Council got smart ticketing last. And I'll take that interjection from the Lord Mayor, Chair, Lord Mayor asked, who made that decision? Of course, the answer to that question is Minister Mark Bailey, who, you know, we, we do know, we do know Minister Mark Bailey, because of his, and I don't blame, genuinely, I don't blame Translink for this, Chair, Translink are trying to do the best job with a minister who makes partisan attacks against this council, who, who defunds this, you know, the bus services in this city as a result of this council being on the opposite side of politics to him, that is not good enough, and, and it's the residents of the city of Brisbane lose out as a result, one point two million residents who would like to have investment. And frankly, Chair, I'll take that interjection from the Lord Mayor, it's right, the Minister Bailey has a weird obsession with this council, it's like he's not gotten over whatever happened in two thousand and three when he was here, Labour backbencher, wasn't successful, left politics, came back as a minister, and now, and now we find-
Just one moment, please, just one moment. Lord Mayor, if you're going to direct any comments to other councillors in the chamber, can you please do it through the chair? Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
So the point that I'm making here, Chair, is that Brisbane City Council is the last transport organisation in the state to be getting smart ticketing, and I believe we'll still be rolling out that smart ticketing in twenty twenty-four at the pace that we're going at. I think that's really sad, a real disappointment, but again, I'm not surprised because the same thing we've seen time and time again from Minister Bailey is that he treats this council differently than anyone, any other organisation that he works with to deliver transport, whether that's private operators, whether that's other councils in the, in the business of operating transport around the state, we are the ones who get treated differently. And, and I think it's not, it's not us who lose politically, we don't lose, we're not affected by that. What is affected is the residents of the city of Brisbane, the commuters who lose out, the commuters that have been waiting for ten years for investment in new growth services in their area, but poor Translink, their officers have to come to us and they just look at us and the face just drops and they go, oh, sorry, we, we've only got inflation funding in the budget this year again, so, yeah. And, and you can see, they're just, they're as disappointed as our officers, that the fact that they keep being held back politically, interfered with in order to be able to deliver these services to Brisbane residents, so. And, you know, while we're on IT projects, Chair, I can't help but have a laugh at the, much like the smart ticketing, the digital drivers licence system, which also Minister Bailey, the Minister for Digital Services, I think now, rolled out over the last week in trial for, I think, over eight hundred days in this state, and of course, when people tried to sign up, it was a complete debacle and disaster, so. But that is, that is what we've come to expect, so I'll leave further debate to the chamber, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy, is there any further debate on item A? See no one rising, we will now put the report, all of those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hammond and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Hammond, is there any debate?
Point of order, Chair.
Yes, councillor Strunk.
Yes, could we ask for item B to be taken serially for voting purposes, please?
Noted, so item B for voting only? Yep, thank you, thank you councillor Strunk. Is there any further debate? There being no debate, I will now put item B, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Collier, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the vote having been eighteen in favour and five against.
Thank you, the item B has passed, councillors, please return to your seats. Councillors, we'll now put items A, C and D to the vote, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Hutton.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
We have a, a motion for afternoon tea for a period of fifteen minutes, moved by councillor Hutton, seconded by the deputy mayor, for a period of fifteen minutes, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. See you in fifteen minutes, councillors. Councillors, we are up to city planning and suburban renewal, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Atwood that the report of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-third, sorry, Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and before moving to the committee report, I would just like to acknowledge the contribution of councillor Fiona Hammond as the, the deputy chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee for quite some time up until recently, so certainly her contribution to that committee has been terrific and certainly a good sounding board from time to time, so thank you very much for your contribution, councillor Hammond. Turning to the committee report, item A was a committee presentation on our Housing Supply Action Plan. Mr Chair, it should be no surprise to my colleagues in the chamber that housing is a challenge in our growing city. We know Brisbane is projected to grow from a population of approximately one point two six million people in twenty twenty-one to a city of one point seven two million people in twenty forty-six. To accommodate this growth, the city will need two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred new homes by twenty forty-six. This equates to approximately eight thousand five hundred new homes every year. Through the development of our housing strategy, released earlier this year, research has also shown that fifty-six percent of all Brisbane households are singles and couples with no children. However, when this figure is compared to the available supply, unfortunately, less than one-third of all Brisbane homes are one and two bedrooms. And whilst council has nearly a decade of housing supply approved, we need to look at ways to make it easier to construct these approved dwellings to deliver quality, affordable and well-located housing. As such, the Housing Supply Action Plan includes the Housing Supply Incentive. The incentive looks to reduce infrastructure charges for the delivery of studio, one and two-bedroom apartments across both build-to-rent and build-to-sell developments. And it is concentrated in smaller targeted areas to address and provide additional supply for these smaller households. These targeted areas include those that are already planned for higher-density living, such as high-density residential, principal and major centres, and mixed-use inner-city zones. Developers with a current eligible development approval from first of January twenty twenty-two can apply for a seventy-five percent infrastructure charges reduction. Additionally, developers will have until the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-five to apply for new development approvals and up until the first of April twenty twenty-six to apply for up to fifty percent of the infrastructure charge reductions. For a development to be eligible, construction must be completed within four years from when the application is approved. But the biggest winner is our community housing providers, who will receive a one-hundred percent permanent and ongoing reduction to make it even easier for them to deliver vital social housing. The Brisbane Housing Company have recently stated that under this incentive, they will be able to save up to a million dollars for every one hundred homes they deliver. Mr Chair, we received several questions during the presentation that were taken on notice, and I'd like to provide an update on these. Councillor Johnston asked how many have benefited from the incentive. As the policy sets our criteria for this incentive, including approved developments that had not yet commenced construction and required developments to be completed within four years, there are yet to be any development sites that have received the reduction. However, interest in the incentive has been overwhelming. Councillor Johnston also asked how many approved DAs that are not yet constructed and the breakdown on these DAs in respect to detached semi and attached dwellings. As the incentive is aimed at higher-density living, such as high-density residential, principal and major centres, and mixed-use inner-city zones, eligible applications would be attached multi-unit dwellings. As such, I can confirm that over forty sites who have received a development approval since the first of January twenty twenty-two have been identified within these zones. Across these sites, there is the potential to provide over three thousand one hundred additional dwellings for the city, increasing much-needed supply. With ninety-six percent of all homes built by the private sector, clearly government alone can't solve this housing challenge. Our plan is the biggest step taken so far to kick-start the construction of new homes, but it is the right thing to do with the limited levers council has to help solve the housing crisis. Reducing infrastructure charges will help reduce construction costs and achieve more housing in key growth areas with good access to high-frequency public transport, jobs and facilities, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Allen, are there any further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the Housing Supply Action Plan briefing. I sat on the committee last week, was the first time that I sat, so I thank councillor Allen through you, Chair. And, and I do have to state on the record that that committee was unexpectedly volatile and definitely not a safe working environment. But I did want to highlight some other points around the Supply Action Plan briefing. You know, since when the TLPI, since the TLPI carupa was presented firstly here in chambers, I've been stating clearly the whole time that this blunt instrument would be used across the city. And in this presentation, we have the clearest demonstration that it will be. And this blunt instrument that will be used across the city is something that would suspend the city plan in so many areas and will undoubtedly supersede the height limits of all the neighbourhood plans in those areas. And of course, doing that creates major concerns for the local communities. And this kind of distribution across the city will undeniably happen without community consultation. And it will happen in areas like Milton, Albion, To Wong, Fortitude Valley, Chermside, Winham, Carondeale, Indrapilly, Mount Gravat and Newstead. But the thing is, these communities are organising. The political apathy that the LMP are hoping for, especially in the place of development, public housing and affordable housing, is disappearing and people engaged, aware. And you know what, specifically in New Farm and Tenerife, they're really activating out there, it's, it's going to be a bit of a fight, they're really getting together out there. And further to the TLPI, which is in the Housing Supply Action Briefing, it's looking a bit like a furphy, isn't it? Because it turns out that even developers don't want to build to unlimited heights, so we're actually yet to see if that TLPI is going to have the effect that it should. And the other thing is, we are yet to see if these tax breaks for developers will achieve anything. But what we do know is one of Brisbane City Council's primary function, which is infrastructure delivery, will be affected, not just by the four hundred million dollar black hole, but also the developer cuts. So these communities, our communities across this chamber, Milton, Albion, To Wong, Fortitude Valley, Chermside, Winham, Carondeale, Indrapinnally, Mount Gravat and Newstead, will see less or nothing in the way of infrastructure deliveries like drainage parks, park upgrades, footpaths and active transport. Some of the core work this council is supposed to do. I mean, speaking of infrastructure, this is what I mean, that people are getting aware. This weekend alone, I had eight conversations, very randomly, about this shade sales on Victoria Bridge and how upset people were, and you know what, they weren't from the south side. This weekend alone, I had, I think about ten conversations about how dangerous Wickham Street and Anne Street are. You know, people are cluing in, they are getting aware and we need to do better. As rents keep rising, we continue again to fail in our work to create mandatory housing affordability, to ease the burden, ease the burden of a rent rate increase of forty-five percent since two thousand and twenty-one, ease the burden of a twelve point seven percent rental increase for renters just this past year. And in this, we're not only failing currently, we're actually failing in the future because there is, again, no mandatory housing affordability in the TLPI, something that it definitely looks like is going to be distributed across the city. And, and through you, Chair, councillor Allen talked about community providers being the big winner. Well, that's not true, we know who the big winners are going to be, it's developers. who the big winners are going to be. It's developers. It's going to be developers. And yet we are yet to see if the TLPI and these tax breaks will work. But as I've said publicly and as often as possible, everyone is getting clued in and you better bet, I'll be there. And so will be the Greens for these communities that are activating across the city. Because we are for these communities and not for tax breaks for developers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Massey. Are there any further speakers to the city planning report? I see no one rising. Councillor Allen?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. What an astounding contribution from councillor Massey. Now, there are a couple of people on this side of the chamber who were sitting in that committee meeting last week, and some of the points councillor Massey made weren't mentioned in that committee meeting. So it's as if she was in a different meeting or perhaps in a parallel universe, but there was no mention made of TLPIs being used across the city. Not one mention. So I don't know where she dreamt that up from. I'm certainly not, you know, working on a TLPI for somewhere else across the city. It's not our preferred mechanism to bring about planning changes, but it is the only one that we've got available to us at the moment under the State Planning Act. However, however, we are working with the state on other planning processes which will hopefully put us in a position where TLPIs aren't required. So it was an extraordinary contribution because there was no mention of using TLPIs elsewhere in the city. The notion that, you know, TLPIs give you, you know, are going to result in, you know, eighty-story or ninety-story buildings, that's false as well. I mean, the reality is it gives developers an opportunity to go higher in these locations in Kuruwa, but whether they actually do that is up to them. And at this point in time, the suggestion would be that they won't be reaching those sorts of heights. But we are looking for additional density in Kuruwa because it's the right place to put it. It's well serviced by public transport and other amenity, and we've said this numerous times in the chamber. It is the right location. We've put in place the framework. The state government have now got the current TLPI, and that will be the basis upon which development proceeds in that particular precinct. And I think councillor Massey's contribution is yet another example of the Greens not supporting housing. Make no mistake, the Greens are not supporters of housing. They have consistently opposed.
Point of order.
Just one moment, councillor Allen. Councillor Massey?
Misrepresentation.
Noted. Thank you. Councillor Allen?
Well, councillor Massey did open up the conversation on housing, but nonetheless, the sort of notion that our initiative to try and bring forward the supply of studio, one and two-bedroom housing is not a good thing is demonstrably incorrect. We have a supply challenge in this city. Developers are facing significant cost challenges. If anybody would just go out and investigate what's happening in the industry, they would be told the reality of the situation. We have to bring down costs to build in order to get that supply on the ground. That's exactly what we're trying to do. We're doing that in a way that's very targeted, that's going to produce the right products in the right location. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor Massey, your point of misrepresentation, please.
Thank you, Chair. I've stated many times that I support low, medium and high-density development and high-density development within our city plan that is thirty stories high.
Thank you, councillor Massey. We will now put the report to the chamber. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, thirty-one October, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Wolf that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Davis?
Well, thank you very much, Mr Chair. Before I go to the report, can I also acknowledge councillor Fiona Hammond? As you would know, councillor Hammond was chair of the EPS committee for some time. And in that time that she did, she did have stewardship of the portfolio area. She really delivered a whole range of projects which we can be very proud of, or certainly started some of the projects for which have now been delivered, including the extraordinary Bradbury Park. So can I thank you, councillor Hammond, for your efforts in this role? They will be remembered for a very long time, and of course, I wish you well in your future endeavours. Mr Chair, last week's committee presentation was on the Brisbane Botanic Gardens Visitor Experience Programme, and it was great to have Dale Arvidson present to us. Dale, as you would know, heads up the curatorial team at the Mount Coother Botanic Gardens. And he presented on how our network of very passionate volunteers worked to activate one of Brisbane's most iconic parklands, which of course is the Mount Coother Botanic Gardens. The Brisbane Botanic Gardens at Mount Coother are often the first tourist site experienced by international and state visitors, with approximately thirty per cent of all garden visitors coming from outside of Brisbane. The gardens also attract a large number of school groups, with over five thousand visitors last year and over thirty-eight hundred so far this year, well on track for six thousand this year. The volunteer welcomeers and guides work to enrich the visitor experience with their knowledge about the garden's features, with not only the ability to guide people around the gardens, but also pass on deeper knowledge of some of the park's features. Our volunteers also assist with a range of events aimed to educate our visitors about the wonder of plants, both large and small, within the Botanic Gardens. The events held at the gardens are designed to cater for a wide range of functions, from small bespoke site-specific ones to larger commercial functions that have up to two thousand people attending. All of the events are focused on promoting plants within the garden and celebrating the beauty and diversity of plants in our subtropical environment. While a lot of our volunteers had been with the gardens for more than a decade, more volunteers are always welcome. We have actually just commenced training our twenty-twenty-three annual intake of new volunteers, which I'm told is a very informative course that takes about a month. Mr Chair, we also had a petition requesting council amend our policy to flying fox management and develop a plan to move flying foxes on, and this was unanimously supported by the committee. And for the record, the committee endorsed an expenditure from the Suburban Enhancement Fund approving the upgrade of the picnic area node at Martindale Street Park in Chermside West. I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising. We will now put the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
Under section forty-two, two J, I would like to move a motion of apology for councillor Wines. It's come to my attention that he won't be joining us this afternoon, and I move that the chambers accept an apology and grant him leave for this meeting.
Seconded.
We have an apology motion for councillor Wines. It's a procedural motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Where am I up to? City Standards. Councillor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I move the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, thirty-first of October, twenty-twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Adaman and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty-twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Adaman, you've got the call.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Last week, the City Standards Committee received an update on the Sherwood Arboretum. The arboretum is overseen by council's Public Space Operations team, which ensures its upkeep through horticultural and habitat maintenance, as well as the construction of new pathways and infrastructure upgrades. The Sherwood Arboretum displays strong values in flora and education with its living collection, habitat management for wildlife and for the community as a valuable recreational green space as we lead up to the one-hundredth anniversary in twenty-twenty-five. I'd also like to acknowledge, as councillor Davis did, Dale Harvison and his team for the tremendous work they do at the arboretum. I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adaman. Sounds like Dale Harvison had a busy day last Tuesday. Any further speakers? There being none, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Community Arts and Nighttime Economy, councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty-twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landis that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty-twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And before moving to the report, I'd just like to mention a few things that have happened around Brisbane this week. And I already spoke about Valley Fiesta at length, so I will leave that one. But just to say that longest-running street party in the world. And of course, we also had Homeless Connect that occurred last Friday. And yet again, we had over seven hundred guests. We had over two hundred, almost three hundred volunteers, one thousand nine hundred and twenty meals, and we had three thousand four hundred and seventy-four visits to fifty-eight service providers, a hundred and thirty-three haircuts and five hundred and ninety bags of food distributed, with twenty-two pallets of food and toiletries, thirteen pallets of clothes and three pallets of shoes. And I can tell you that the ladies who do the knitting of the blankets are indeed the most popular spot, and that they were the first call for many, many people that arrived last week. It was fantastic to see so many familiar faces there, and I very much enjoyed visiting the different stalls, the different services that were on offer. But also to know that we have many of our council officers who gave up their time and volunteered. And I really want to mention Peter, who has been a volunteer for twenty-eight years. And I think that deserves a special mention. And really want to say a huge thank you to all of those who organised such a large event. It's run incredibly well, and I know that a lot of work goes into it. Chris Murder, I think, is someone that we also need to mention because it really was a fantastic event, as it always is. I'd also like to mention Diwali, the Indian Festival of Lights. I know that there were lots of Diwalis right across Brisbane and that many of our councillors in the chamber attended. And I know there was a very big one outside in King George Square. But it's fantastic, again, that we have such a wonderful multicultural community that we can, that we can sort of attend those wonderful events. I'd also like to mention St James College, who ran their very first creative arts showcase in their new building in Fortitude Valley. And I just want to say a big shout-out to St James College. They have a lot of students that come from right across Brisbane. There's not very many that come from the local area. There's a lot of children who attend who are from refugee backgrounds, and they do the most amazing job of supporting these young people. And I just want to say a big thank you to St James College. I also attended Fantastics, which was the inimitable Gail Wilshere and Twelfth Night Theatre. And Gail just loves what she does. We had a wonderful opportunity to showcase the fantastic artists that she had been mentoring. And again, a fantastic afternoon and something that just is what makes Brisbane Brisbane. I also attended the Area Twenty-Five Toastmasters Conference and was pleased to see that we had some of our very own Brisbane City Council Toastmasters there. And again, what a great opportunity for people to learn new skills and to really sort of showcase again the Toastmasters and what they do for a very long time across Brisbane. And it was a great opportunity for me to learn a little bit more about what they do and the areas that they represent. On Sunday, I was pleased to attend the Four MBS Brisbane Shakespeare Festival, the Tempest, along with their patron, the governor. We sat out in Roma Street Parklands and had the most amazing opportunity to see local Shakespearean artists perform, much as they probably would have performed way back when in the open air. And it was, of course, a fantastic event. And the rain did not fall on our parade. And so again, it was brilliant. And also, I want to acknowledge councillor Wines in his absence, who yet again took out the councillors' croquet cup. Each year, we Mertha Croquet people and the Windsor Croquet people get together. I think I've won it twice, I think we've won it twice over the last seven years. But councillor Wines and the Windsor Croquet people have really sort of done themselves proud and have taken out the other events. So it was a great event. I really want to again thank these wonderful clubs right across Brisbane. We have croquet clubs, we have bowls clubs, we have so many people that contribute to making Brisbane such a beautiful city that it is. And moving to the report, we can talk about some more things that make Brisbane as beautiful as it is, where we had a presentation last week on the Queensland Music Trail's Sweet Relief. And yet again, we heard from the team that put all of this together about the amazing work that they had done at North Shore Hamilton. This year, the festival was held in this area, and it really was an opportunity for them to set it up in such a way that they also partnered with Spinal Life Australia. And the festival was accessible and inclusive, and they were at great pains to explain to us how that had occurred. And it was something that I think that we're all very proud of. So the festival was delivered in conjunction with a range of industry and government partnerships, and it was an exceptional visitor experience that they hope to grow further into the new year. So on that note, Mr Chair, I will leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Are there any further speakers? We see no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee meeting, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty-twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the thirty-first of October, twenty-twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Cunningham, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Just briefly, our presentation last week was about the Brisbane Emergency Services Expo, which was held at Victoria Park Baramban on the fourteenth of October, at the end of the state government's Get Ready Queensland Week. The event was a joint initiative of Brisbane City Council and Get Ready Queensland. There were forty exhibitors in total, twice as many as the previous year. It included twelve teams from across council, including city resilience, of course, wars, cars and news, we love our acronyms, and a number of external exhibitors as well. There was a great turnout from our LDMG partners, who had stand-sharing messaging and providing valuable resilience information on ways to prepare, prevent, respond and recover from severe weather hazards that we face in our city, with bushfires obviously being a threat this season. It was a family-focused event, as we know that young people can be a great driver of behaviour change at home, pester power, as they call it. A few of us would be very familiar with it. We had a number of emergency services vehicles on display, as well as our bin trucks or waste trucks, which I'm told was actually the most popular display at the event on the day. Of course, the event was also an opportunity for residents to thank our city's everyday heroes, including our Brisbane City SES unit. It was estimated that once again, over ten thousand people attended the expo, and I thank everyone involved in their hard work and on a personal night. Very sorry to have missed it, as I was unwell, quite unwell on the day. Thanks, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising. We will now put the Finance and City Governance Committee report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to a presentation of petitions. Are there any petitions? Councillor Hutton?
Yes, Mr Chair, I've got a petition with regards to a skate park at Newcombe Park.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mr Chair. A petition requesting council ease restrictions on alcohol consumption in council green spaces and parks.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Are there any further petitions? No. Councillor Hutton, can I have a motion of acceptance, please?
Mr Chair, I move that petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committees concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? See no one rising. Councillors, are there any matters of general business?
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Just one moment, councillor Hammond. Now you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Please bear with me because it might be a teary affair. Today I rise to make my final speech in this place. Told you I couldn't do it, too. I stand before you with mixed emotions, excited about my new chapter, but sad to say goodbye to this one. I first walked in here fifteen and a half years ago as a young naive mother of two young children, full of ideas of how to make Marchant better. I quickly learned that it was not my ideas that mattered, it was the ideas of residents and bringing their ideas to life. I also learnt that everything we do is going to have support and opposition. Every resident's view is important, and as a politician, you are not instantly believed. And this is why I do a lot of public meetings, street meetings, mobile offices, so residents can hear that other residents may have different views and their views are just as important. I love this when a resident said to me, do you stay awake late at night thinking of ways to just annoy us? Well, the simple answer there is no, and we've all been there in this place. To the new councillors, the important thing for us to remember is to listen, and that we make friends and lose friends every day, and we are not going to make everyone happy. Whether it's a footpath, bikeway or road upgrade, what I say to you is don't be afraid to go, stand up to your residents and explain, front your residents and explain, and sometimes support changes to a project. Don't behind, behind your desk, get out there and listen, because that's what we're paid to do, to be the people's representative. This administration that I have had the honour to be a part of has a proven track record of delivery, and there are so many, too many to mention in only ten minutes. Number one, working with local people at the Stafford Skate Bowl. I empowered them by giving them ownership of the park, and it was amazing to see that the crime rate dropped by eighty percent. Been open, honest with them and spending nearly every second day back in two thousand and nine down there, getting them to organise events and even doing a photo shoot in the bowl. One of my fondest memories is when I was in the bowl, the kids weren't going to let me out until I promised for some improvements at the, at the local park. Thankfully, the boys and young ladies let me out, and we have exercise equipment and dog off leash area down there now, which is both used very well. G-bun overpasses, number two. The major infrastructure upgrade has been promised for nearly a hundred years, a lot like the railway to Redcliffe. Well, it took an LNP council and an LNP state government to deliver, and what a difference it has made to the local community. Other major intersection upgrades like mortal terrace Hamilton Road, Murphy Road intersection upgrade, Ellison and Kirby, Days Road and Ramont Road. All of these came by listening to residents careful planning and construction. I'm so proud of the council, their continued work done at the Kedge and Brook restoration after the terrible floods in twenty twenty two. I would like to thank the residents for their patience while we built back better. Other milestones I am proud of delivering are the Chermside and Grange Library upgrades, getting Valleys Football Club the extra fields once the Grange arches moved on. Sorry Geraldine Knapp, I know you wanted tennis courts there, and it took you approximately eighteen months to forgive me, but I can say that Valleys are very happy and so is the community. One of the saddest but proudest events which occurred was the Brothers Football Club house burning down in early twenty twelve. The controller of the Chermside station at the time was Chris, and he was also the coach of the club. Scotty, another fiery, was also president of the club at the time, and he was on his way in the fire truck when he woke his wife up at one thirty AM to bring the keys down to the clubhouse, just in case they needed access. This is what I love about our community, we are so connected. I said at the time I had the trifecta, not that I support gambling. I was mum, patron and councillor of the local club, and I was happy to see the administration at the time jump into action and give in twenty twelve dollars, half a million dollars for the new clubhouse. Not only this, but the Northside Footy community, as far as Debra, did their own fundraising to support brothers. This is real community of which I am so proud. This proves that community is not defined by literal boundaries. Mayfair at Lennon Park is another project I'm so proud of. I started this in two thousand and eight, but it could not have been possible without Inner North Rotary, formerly Stafford Rotary. Without you Rotarians, Mayfair would never have happened. I have been honoured to be patron of many clubs and organisations over the years, including Brothers Juniors Rugby League, Valleys Football Club, Metropolitan Dog Obedience and the local Chermside Ambulance Committee. Although I'm standing down, I'll always be there to support you. I would like to say a big thanks to Valleys and Brothers for making me there again, twenty twenty four club patron. Thank you. To Valleys and Brothers, I always enjoyed wearing mixed uniforms when you played against each other, and my greatest embarrassment was doing the first kick at one of your senior games. I've never been asked back, but I can promise you, I will, I have practised my kick since then, and I'm so happy I gave it a go. Again, as a result of listening to my community, I have delivered many park up, local park upgrades over the years. And of course, this year, I'm so proud to stand beside Lord Mayor Adrian Schriner and Chair Tracy Davis at the opening of the fantastic new play space at Bradbury Park, which transformed a dusty, dry space which no one used into one of the most visited parks in our city. A park which delegations from council as far as way, as ways Western Australia have come to see how Brisbane just does things better. I have been honoured through my career to have the opportunity to name two parks in my wards. Both parks were new. The first was Terry Hampson Reserve. This administration has always been dedicated to a clean, green Brisbane. I was proud to announce that council had purchased one point nine hectares of greenspace, and it would be named after the great Terry Hampson, a previous Labor member for Marchant. If Terry was still with us, I would say thank you. He never played party politics with me, we both had mutual respect for each other because we both put our community first always. I would like to turn to one of my many sporting groups, and that is warehouse cricket. Warehouse cricket has been played at Marchant Park for over a hundred years. Its centenary couldn't be celebrated because of Covid, and I wanted to say to the stalwart Lawrence Christie, you are amazing, your passion for cricket is understated. And I'd like to thank you personally for your, for supporting my brother who has an intellectual dis-, my brother in law, sorry, who has an intellectual disability, and who has like you, an amazing passion for cricket. Also, thank you for introducing me to my all time cricket hero, Kepler Vessels. I recently hosted a charity cricket match in Stafford, which I hope will be an annual event to support Hearts of Purple, a great organisation delivering real action for at risk women and men in DV. The match was supported by our Indian community, and congratulations to the Napoleons who won the day. I'm so proud to say councillor Davis and my eighty nine year old mum were our opening batters. A big thank you to councillor Davis and councillor Adaman for supporting this great cause. However, I do have a complaint to make about councillor Adaman's umpiring. There was no wides made on my watch. To my wonderful ward staff over the many years, Lisa Vaughan, Karen, and my current ward office staff, Elizabeth Caroline, and especially to you, Anthony, you have been my PA for eight of the fifteen years in office. Thank you for the work you have done for me, but more importantly, the thank, thank you for what you have done for the people of Marchant, dealing with day to day issues and delivering outcomes. To my mother, you have always been and always will be an ALP supporter, but I thank you for wearing the LNP shirt and handing out how to votes for me, and I'll always remember you to explaining to the ALP, you didn't know where you went wrong, but you always supported me. I always, I also thank mum for taking a risk on the LNP next election and voting for Alex Gibney. To Hopewell, I wanted to say a few shawna words, however, I will mess it up in this state, I'll say it badly. Vamba Zenanaka, looking at my husband to see if I said it right, and I didn't. To the chamber team, thank you Billy for filling up my Mentos and water and the cloaks. Thank you for putting up with the chamber nonsense at times. Lastly, but certainly not least, we could not do this job without the support of our families. A massive thank you to my husband Neil for believing in me and supporting me on this new adventure. Without you, I could never have made this braced, brave step. In kid order, Shaun, I want to be a grandmaster, hurry up. And I am so proud that you've embracing farming like your dad. Kylie, wow, what do I say about you, you're an amazing horsewoman, and your father and I are so proud of the woman you have grown into. Please marry Lily and give me a grandchild. Alex, I could not be prouder of you, you have chosen a career as a soldier, and this makes me so proud that you have chosen to serve your country in this way. And so I come to Piper. Where do I start with you? When I told you I was stand, to stand down, you have been so very supportive. You have been a part of my campaign team since you were three years of age, and you have always embraced the challenges which have come your way. I am so proud of the young woman that you have turned into, and no Carsten and Piper, no grandchildren yet. To our youngest, Jodie, please be the best artist we know you can be. To my biggest supporter, my dad Neil, oh my goodness, where do I start with you, dad? Thank you dad for believing me always. You told me, all of us kids, that we can achieve whatever we put our mind to, and you led by example. I would not be standing here today delivering this speech without your dad. Thank you. To the team of two thousand, class of two thousand and eight, it's been a wild ride, and I've loved working with you all the way through for the last fifteen and a half years. To the whole team, team Schriner, I know that you are going to bring, give it all to the residents of Brisbane and be successful in victory in March next year, twenty twenty four. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hammond, and thank you for your service to Brisbane. Are there any other items of general business? Councillor Whitme.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm just talking on one item of general business today, but it's an important one. Homophobia has no place in Brisbane. Just last week, in these chambers, we were all excited to have Tom Oliver come in and talk to us about what twenty twenty three Winham Fringe is going to be like. One of those acts is the Winham Pride Parade. Unfortunately, in the past week, some LNP members have shown that they do not support the LGBTQI, QI plus community in the Bayside area or Tom Oliver's Pride Festival. They have even gone so far as to call local businesses and demand that they pull funding from Winham Fringe. Joan Pease, the member for Litton, invited LNP candidates and MPs to join us in supporting the Pride Festival and taking a stand against discrimination. We're still waiting for LNP members to stand up, put party politics aside and grow a spine.
Just one moment, councillor Whitme. Point of order, councillor Hammond.
I find that offensive. I just wished my daughter to marry her female partner and to be told that I want my daughter to be married and I want her to give me a child. I find that disgraceful and untrue.
Thank you, thank you councillor Hammond. Councillor Whitme, can I caution you on your question? I would, I would, hang on, I haven't finished yet. I would ask you to withdraw the statement noting that there are members in this chamber who have close friends and family in, no, do not, do not in relationships.
If I had have been able to finish my sentence.
You've offended another councillor, councillor Whitme. I'm advising you to withdraw.
Okay, I'll withdraw the statement and then finish my sentence, start again and finish my sentence.
Thank you.
We are still waiting.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Murphy.
I haven't seen anything councillor Whitme's talked about, I'm just wondering if she has a document to table or anything she could table.
Sorry, I, I, sorry councillor Murphy, uh, just, councillor Massey? No. Councillor Murphy, can you clarify what you're asking, please?
I was just asking quite genuinely if councillor Whitme has anything to table, that would be helpful.
In terms of what? Oh, it's a ques-, sorry, sorry, now I understand. Councillor Whitme, councillor Murphy would like to know if you have any documents to table to support your allegations? No, okay, thank you. You've got the call.
We're still waiting for any local LNP member to step up, put party politics aside and grow a spine. A letter is currently being circulated to express our support for Winham Fringe and Bay Pride, addressed to our local sponsors. Out of the three announced candidates, I am the only one with the courage to sign it, to condemn bigotry and fully support Winham Fringe and Tom Oliver. I do this as a member of the LGBTQI community. I do this as a proud member of Rainbow Labor, as a leader of, in our community and a human capable of empathy. Remember these words, the standard you walk past is the standard you accept.
Deputy Mayor. Councillor Whitme.
Everyone who fails to condemn homophobia should hang their head in shame for not having the courage to stand up for what's right, what's fair and what's equal.
Sorry, deputy mayor. Councillor Howard jumped before you.
I'd like to speak on the Winham Fringe Festival.
Can I give you the call, councillor Howard? You've got the call.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Chair, what we have just heard in this chamber is appalling, absolutely appalling. The LNP, just like the ALP, the Greens, any other political party, is made up of a very, very broad churches with people who say things that do not represent the party's views. Something that's placed on Facebook does not necessarily represent the truth. What we've just heard in this chamber is a fellow councillor labelling other councillors as homophobic. I find that incredibly offensive.
Just one moment, please, councillor Howard. Councillor Whitme.
I did not call anyone.
Just one moment.
Misrepresentation.
Thank you. Councillor Howard.
Through you, Mr Chair, I heard the words that the LNP were homophobic. That is what I heard. Now.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Whitme.
I asked councillor Howard to withdraw what she just said, that's not what I said, and the transcript will reflect. I said there are members of the LNP that are homophobic, and I do take personal offence by what she just said.
Councillor Whitme, you're rising on a point of order. Councillor, you've asked for a right of reply, right? Can we hear, you've still got that, are you willing to, you'd like two rights of reply? Thank you, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Uh, sorry, sorry, my, my mistake, sorry councillor Cassidy, my mistake, it was two right, uh, two misrepresentations, my apologies. Councillor Cassidy.
Just seeking some clarification, councillor Whitme just asked councillor Howard to withdraw something. You directed councillor Whitme to withdraw, and she did earlier. Yes, she did, you don't listen, ever.
I advised councillor, I didn't direct councillor Whitme, I advised her to withdraw it.
Are you advising councillor Howard to withdraw that statement? Because councillor Whitme just made very clear that she was offended by that and what councillor Howard was untrue.
And councillor Whitme has two points of misrepresent-, don't councillor Collier.
Point of order.
Just one moment councillor Cassidy, I'll respond to the first one. Councillor Whitme has two rights of reply. If councillor Whitme would like to stand again and describe to me what she's offended about, I'm happy to direct councillor Howard to withdraw.
A point of order, Chair. Councillor Whitme might like to clarify that, but the exact words the councillor Whitme used, you might like to consult the clerks that could assist you with this, was that she wanted councillor Howard to withdraw what she had just said because it was untrue, and councillor Whitme explained that she didn't call any councillors homophobes, she called members of the LNP.
Yeah, I don't.
And she asked, and she asked for that to be withdrawn.
Councillor Cassidy, I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Whitme, your point of order.
Yeah, you, you've just asked.
No, it's councillor Cassidy. What I'm going to do is I want to hear from councillor Whitme.
You did before.
No, no.
Yes.
Councillor Whitme.
Yeah, you invited me before when, while talking with councillor Collier, I'm sorry, councillor Cassidy, to stand up and explain why I was offended. I did not call a single councillor in this room homophobic, and I asked Vicky Howard to, councillor Howard, sorry, to withdraw what she said.
Thank you. Councillor Howard, you can withdraw.
I'm happy to withdraw.
Thank you.
Mister Chair. However Mister Chair, I must say that calling anyone homophobic in this chamber without a skerrick of saying who is homophobic, labelling members of a political party as homophobic is disgusting. We have.
Just one moment councillor Howard. Councillor Whitme.
Misrepresentation again.
Thank you councillor Howard.
We have many members of the LNP who are representative of the LGBTIQ plus community. Many, many members. Many LNP members who are very proud. They march in the Pride Parade. They support each other. They support the LGBTIQ plus community. And to have people mysteriously labelled as homophobic is a disgrace. Now through you Mister Chair.
Councillor Collier, do not.
Through you Mister Chair. I rise to speak about the Winham Fringe Festival. A festival that this council, the Shriner Council, has supported since day one. Day one. Tom Oliver came into my office. We have, the Lord Mayor has supported. Everybody, everybody has supported the amazing work that Tom Oliver does. And for, for the Winham Fringe to be used as a political tool is a disgrace. So let me just say again. Again, I'll take the interjection. The leader of the opposition using it as a fundraiser. Don't even know what that means. But. Oh, there's more interjections. So through you Mister Chair, let me make this very, very clear. The Shriner Council has supported Tom Oliver from day one. The Shriner Council will continue to support Tom Oliver and the Winham Fringe Festival. We are immensely proud of the success of that festival and what it has done for the people of Winham. I know that Alex Gibney is one of Tom Oliver's strongest supporters. I know that Alex Gibney is, will march very proudly with the Bay Pride when they take to the streets of Winham. I will also like to put on record that the Pride people from Winham have been marching in Winham for a long time. This is the first official Pride event in Winham. But my goodness me, we've had some fantastic events at the Winham Fringe. And it's a very, very sad day when something such as this gets dragged into this chamber. I am just incredibly sad that councillor Whitme sees it, sees it as her right to stand up and to label someone homophobic without even knowing who she's labelling. She says it's not one of us, thank goodness for that. But what I want to say to you Mister Chair and to the chamber and to anyone who's listening, that the Shriner Council has supported Tom Oliver from day one and will continue to do so. And we wish the Winham Fringe Festival all its very best, including Bay Pride.
Thank you councillor Howard. Just one moment councillor Massey. Councillor Whitme, your three points of misrepresentation please.
Yeah, so again, I did get up and clarify that I didn't call a single person in this room homophobic. I, I take issue with the, the fact that I'm refusing to table things or name names considering that the other side of the chamber is very much calling about no privilege in this place quite often. And I, I think it was just mainly just about the fact that yeah, they should probably talk to their candidate if they don't actually know anything that I'm talking about because she's very well aware of what's going on.
Councillors, councillor Howard, deputy mayor, councillor Collier. Sorry, my apologies councillor Collier. It was councillor Whitme. Please accept my apologies councillor Collier. Councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on four items. Firstly, to congratulate Valley Fiesta. It was great to be there for the opening with councillor Howard. It was incredible to see the street closure again because it's been a couple of years since the street closure has been in place. And it was really amazing to catch up with so many friends like Dave from the Tivoli and Princess Theatre who programmed the event. And also Chris Ant and Mandy and the whole Coon music team who I'm very warmly connected to. So congratulations to the Valley Fiesta. And hopefully it'll become bigger and better than ever in the future. The second item I'd like to speak to is Out for Australia Queensland Local Heroes, which is an event I attended just this weekend. This event celebrated the Out for Australia Queensland winners. So I congratulate all those winners. And I also really thank them very, very deeply and personally for their storytelling on the night. Where they really, the winners opened up about their lives, their challenges, their achievements and the growth. They're such wonderful heroes for the LGBTIQ plus community. And I thank them very much for the welcome of me and for their openness and sharing their stories with me. Thirdly, I'd like to give a shout out to St Mary's Kangaroo Point who this Sunday celebrated their 100th and 50 year anniversary. I really appreciate the thoughtful service. There's a few reverends in Kangaroo Point and also in the Gabba that I've built close relationships with. So I really thank you for that invitation and sharing that celebration with me. And also for the luncheon, the food was great. Thanks to all the volunteers that made that day happen. And lastly, I rise to congratulate Justice for Palestine who put on the biggest protest this Sunday, calling for ceasefire in Gaza. I will see you again on the 12th of November. The protests continue across the city and will continue until ceasefire happens. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Are there any further speakers of general business? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mister Chair. And I'm very pleased to stand and speak on behalf of the administration councillor about the wonderful councillor King, who haven't even changed from councillor King in my phone, but it's councillor Hammond, who like myself is an O8 baby and joined the team when Campbell Newman got his majority in this place as well. Councillor Hammond has served on this team for 15 loyal years. It seems like yesterday Fiona, I don't know where the years have gone. And she is one of the few like myself, and I know on behalf of councillor Wines who would love to have spoken today as well. We have almost seen it all, I would think, in this place as well. Three Lord Mayors, Newman, Quirk and now Shriner. And the growth of our city at a very, very fast pace. And particularly the Marchant Ward over the last 16 years as well. But right from day one, and I so clearly remember meeting Fiona at a Women Liberal Party function as it was in the day. Two very, very young blonde girls going, what, what, what are we thinking? We're running for what? And you're on the North Side, like I have no idea where that is. And she's like, I have no idea where Wishart is. But we, very from the day one, the thing about councillor Hammond is she put her local community at the forefront of everything that she does. And it cannot be denied. And we heard from her, there's an enormous list, some to call out of the bigger ones, the brand new library at Champside, the massive upgrade of Bradbury Park, the, the fight and success of the upgrade of Murphy and Alison Road, brand new parkland in Lutwich and many other places as her community grew exponentially as a principal regional activity centre. And she has held the state government to account on road projects around the Princess Charles Hospital, as well as exposing Mark Bailey's Band-Aid busway. And I'm sure she's going to continue that as well. So there has been a shopping list of deliverables. And as we heard from councillor Hammond, there was many of them and some she's extremely proud of. And I can rest assured for the people of Brisbane and for the people of Marchant that they absolutely got their bang for their buck when they voted in councillor King in 2008 and continued with councillor Hammond in 2016 and 20. It is crystal clear that whoever replaces councillor Hammond in Marchant Ward is going to have massive and beautiful shoes to fill. And obviously, as councillor Hammond has announced, that she will be nominating to go to another level of government in the future. We wish her the absolute best. We know we need people like councillor Hammond in the Queensland Parliament. She has fought hard for her community. The status quo up there is not working and she will be a fantastic addition to a Christopheley government in the future. And we wish her all the very, very best.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Are there any further speakers in general business? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak about, I suppose, three, three events. Two past and one to come. First of all, I'd like to talk about the Diwali Festival down at King George Square last Friday. And it was very challenging, of course, for the FICQ who pull it all together. President Newp and his, his leadership team were under great pressure because of the, the rain that actually happened early, early afternoon or mid afternoon. And it looked like it was going to threaten to continue on. But luckily enough, at around about 6:30, when the formal stuff is going to happen on the stage, it cleared up and, and it all went away. And it was good for the rest of the evening, I believe. Anyways, it's, I know this, I think this is the 13th year they've held it in the city here. I remember, I remember one time that was, we had it up at Brisbane Square as well. They tried it up there once, I believe. I was there that night. And certainly King George Square certainly is the better, better venue. But of course, when it's really a successful event, which generally speaking is, of course, it, the square sort of fills. And of course, it's shoulder room only, actually trying to get around sometimes. So it's, it's a very popular one. FICQ fundraiser over the year to be able to, to fund it. It costs a lot of money and I just put my hands, I put my hands together to try to, and congratulate the organising committee who's been doing this year after year after year after year. Our, I just also want to say that our candidate for Lord Mayor, Tracy Price came along. She's come to a number of, of, of events for the Indian community. And she continues to build bridges. And honestly, the ladies especially really want to find out about her. And it's really, it's really pleasing to see that, that many people from that community are wanting to have, have a chat to potentially, and I think will be our next female Lord Mayor. Now moving on, I'd just like to also Sri Lanka. I've got a temple in my ward on Costadine Street. And it's, it's a Sri Lankan temple. And they have a school which has been going for like 30 years now. This is a school that meets within the temple grounds. It's just about to expand their, their size as well on a, on a development within that, within that, within those grounds. Because it's been such a success that there is well over 200 students that come along every Saturday. And I believe once the expansion goes through, it'll be around about 250. So, but of course, what, what they do, of course, is that they try to secure the, of course, the Sri Lankan mother tongue with the generations to come. I actually met the, one of the original students for that, at that, at that school, which goes back 30 years. And it's, it's really good that they want to sustain their cultural ways, whether it be singing or dancing or all those other traditional things that, that many of our cultural groups want to continue on so that their, their children and grandchildren don't forget where they come from. And, and they also retain that language as well, which is really important for Australia as well. Because we are a multicultural community and we benefit greatly for, for that, for that. Now, another one is about, as I say, it's about to happen tomorrow morning at nine o'clock now. This is the first time that I've actually was made aware of this particular one. I don't know how many years it's been going on. But it's the community engagement of the Young Environmental Leadership Network, which is happening. And the reason I became aware of it is because we have three students from St John's who've been taking part in those meetings leading up to the, to the, to the graduation. And I'd just like to give a big shout out, shout out to Clara Reid, Lily Turner and, and Sophie Pham, who undertake, undertook that program. And, and of course, with the, with their, with the direction and encouragement of Maria McCliver, who's the principal of St John's and that support teacher Sharon Singh. I look forward to catching up with the students tomorrow to find out what actually occurred at all those five meetings that they, that they attended. Just to see what, what areas of environmental studies that they entail. Because again, this is the first time that I was made aware of this particular program. So thank you St John's for putting your hand up to try to encourage students to look at the, our environment, which is very important. And I look very much forward to nine o'clock tomorrow morning, bearing, going through that one hour of traffic to try to get in through the congested Western Freeway. But anyways, we'll get there and, and I'm sure it'll be very worthwhile. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Strunk. Councillor Owen, you've got your hand up. You've got the call.
I do Mister Chair. Thank you Mister Chair. Mister Chair, I would like to speak tonight in regards to councillor Fiona Hammond, the outgoing councillor of Marchant Ward who has served in that role for over 5,700 days, 15 and a half years. And I can recall when I first met councillor Hammond. And it was the very moment that she was handing in her nomination form to stand for pre-selection, to, to run in the election as a councillor. And I can remember that day that she was there, holding Piper in her arms, this little three-year-old girl. And there was something that clicked between us and it has built into a very, very strong friendship. We have seen many changes in the last 15 and a half years. And I know alongside our class of 2008 on our side of the administration who are still here in councillor Adams and councillor Wines, that we had a very different election back in 2008 to the ones that take place today. Back in our first election, it was very much issue-based campaigning. It wasn't the nastiness, the vitriol, the personal attacks that seem to pervade into the chamber today. And that is a very sad reflection on some people. But I know that councillor Hammond has always been true to her community. She has always been dedicated to listening to her residents. She has worked hard every single day of those 15 and a half years. We have both seen our children go from being little ones to being adults and being successful in their chosen professions and fields. And I think that coming from that perspective of raising children whilst in this job, it is very much a balancing act. And I don't think many people truly realise the sacrifice that families make, the sacrifices that our children endure and the sacrifices that we as mothers make to not only balance the needs of the community, but also the needs of our families. And I do say as well that councillor Hammond has been a very, very fierce advocate for many, many sporting organisations and also for many groups within her community. And I know she enjoys donning her Valley's Diehards shirts and her brother's JRLFC shirts and also supporting Warehouse Cricket. But importantly, she has been there for her community. And I know we often have conversations when she's going to functions with the, the North Side Indian community. And we, we will have very much a conversation around these many events that take place on both the North Side and the South Side. And whilst you have developed Mayfair into a very successful event on the North And whilst you have developed Mayfair into a very successful event on the North Side, councillor Hammond, I still believe that some of my events on the South Side can rival it. We have always had a north-south rivalry.
Point of order.
And I think it's been a very healthy.
Just one moment, councillor Owen.
And it's also one that permeates right throughout the city as well. But I do commend you on the legacy that you have built in Marchant Ward, from the Mayfair bringing people together.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Councillor Owen, councillor Owen, we have a point of order against you. Councillor Hammond, your point of order.
I think councillor Owen has missed out on something very important. The North Side is better, and we have two libraries, councillor Owen.
Councillor Hammond, I don't uphold your point of order, hopefully for the last time. Councillor Owen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I knew when I got onto that north-south rivalry that there wouldn't be an ounce of holding back, that councillor Hammond would have to say something. But I just do say, in regards to your advocacy as well for Hearts of Purple, I know this is a cause that is very close to your heart and that you have strongly advocated for the team at Hearts of Purple. And all I do say to you is when you're out there going forward, don't pack the Mentos in your lunchbox, because you don't need to be going to any more dentists after cracking a tooth on them in the chamber. But I know that you can walk away today and hold your head up high and be proud of what you have achieved, because you have significantly made the Marchant Ward a better place for not only your local residents, but people right across our city of Brisbane. You have served the residents of Marchant extremely capably, competently, and in a way that they know that you have always been there for them. And you have served this city of Brisbane in your role as a councillor impeccably, in the sense that you have always been true to our oath of office, that you have treated people in a fair, just and equitable manner in everything that you have done. So my friend, it is sad to lose you from our chamber, but I wholeheartedly wish you every success in your next journey. And I will be there cheering you on in many ways. And you know that we will maintain our contact, remain friends. And from our first day sitting next to each other in this chamber, I believe we have a lifelong friendship. And I say to the people of Stafford, pick a winner, support Fiona Hammond in the next state election, because she will serve you absolutely impeccably.
Thank you, councillor Owen. Are there further items of general business? Councillor Collier.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on one item of general business today, about Homeless Connect event that was held last week. This is an amazing council event, and it's only possible because of the support of not only council. And in this current climate, events like Homeless Connect should be getting more support, not less. However, what I will say is that what makes this event really special is the way that communities can get involved. And I particularly locally want to acknowledge the Belimba Library for being a collection point, as well as the initiative from Tagulua Early Education, who actually did a donations drive. And it was amazing to be able to volunteer in the food store and see firsthand how those donations were making a difference. Tracy Price and I volunteered all day in the food store. And to say it was a confronting experience is absolutely true. However, what I will say is that a lot of the people there were known to me as local councillor, because they live in my community too. So, you know, you can't make assumptions about where things like homelessness, housing insecurity, the most horrific domestic and family violence victims, and their children as well. And to see their faces there, you know, getting support, it was deeply impacting to me. By the end of the event, the end of the day, in the food store, there only were a couple of items left, but we really did hand out most of the donations, which is quite confronting when you think about just how many pallets of basic items, like, you know, non-perishable food, toiletries, things like that were handed out. And I can hand on heart say the people who received them were so grateful. So many people were saying, oh no, I don't need to take that much, leave it for someone else. They're just, our friends are the most amazing, amazing people. By the end of the day, yeah, we only had a couple of items left, like, you know, tin spaghetti and bread. And these were given to the amazing service providers who were there and do this work, not just one or two days a year, but every single day of the year. So events like these need more support, not less. I really do think it is an excellent event put on by council.
Thank you, councillor Collier. And can I reiterate my apology before, earlier in GB for calling you out in error? Further items of general business? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak about Diwali on the North Side of Brisbane. On Saturday night, we celebrated with the Hindu Society of Queensland. I wanted to put my congratulations on record to Dr Jai Ram, his family, his committee, and everyone that put in an amazing effort to organise what was a fantastic celebration of the Festival of Lights on the North Side of Brisbane. It was an amazing celebration of culture, both traditional and modern. We had Bollywood meet the Serod. And that celebration of Indian culture and Hindu culture, I remarked on the night, was something that makes our North Side community special, and it makes our North Side community even more cohesive, where we come together and celebrate what makes us interesting and what makes us a little bit different. And the central message of Diwali rang true that night, of course, as we sat down and celebrated over a meal together, the triumph of light over darkness, of knowledge over ignorance, and of good over evil, of course. And we could all use a bit of that around the world at the moment. So happy Diwali to everyone who celebrates.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further items of general business? Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to also join with other councillors in paying tribute to councillor Hammond's 15 years of service to Brisbane City Council. Look, I won't take as long as some of the other speakers, councillor Hammond, but when I was a new councillor in this place, you were definitely one of the first to take me under your wing and to teach me a lot about how this place operates and about how to do this job. And I very much have always appreciated that. I've enjoyed your bright and bubbly demeanour. I've enjoyed your sick sense of humour, that you do enjoy showing off in our party room on a regular occasion. No, but it is true, but.
Just one moment, councillor Murphy. Councillor Hammond, we do not know, we do not call out across the chamber. We do not call out across the chamber. If you would like to speak to councillor Murphy through the chair, please rise on a point of order. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
And we can see, Chair, she's running it down to the wire, still getting in trouble in her final, you know, minutes in this place. But look, I want to say, I think she's been brilliant for Marchant. I think she's been a tremendous advocate for that seat, a very, very difficult seat for our side of politics to hold, not one that we expected to hold for a long time. And here she is 15 years later. What a tremendous, successful run.
Councillor Hammond.
All of the stuff with Warehouse Cricket is very true. And I know what a great advocate Lawrence Christie has been of you and the work you've done out there over many years. But we know you've been dedicated to many causes, and particularly the cause of environment, not only as a local councillor, with all the different parks you've opened, and Bradbury Park, I think, being a crowning achievement of that, you know, but also during your time as Environment Chair as well. I will speak for him, because he's not here, he's had to rush away with a family emergency. But I know what a great friend you've been to councillor Wines in his time here. You two have had very much a symbiotic relationship, and you've supported each other as good mates and as a boundary, councillors on the same boundary through that time, as well as former councillor Wyndham and councillor Knapp as well, who I think, you know, I think, a little bit like me, you probably copped a little bit of bullying from her in your first, after 2008, which was character building for you as it was for me.
Just one moment, councillor Murphy. Can I caution you with your use of language, because the former councillor is behind you?
I am worried about that, Chair. I am worried about that. I'll have to get an escort from your chair to the car park. And also councillor Owen, I should say as well, and she's made a tremendous contribution tonight. One of the biggest contributions, though, that councillor Hammond has made to our team is a steady stream of policy liaison officers and staff that seem to just come from her office, like a breeding ground, always. We get good staff in the Marchant Ward office, and then they get promoted into the Lord Mayor's office or into Chair's offices. So that's weird. You seem to be the only officer that does that with the regularity and the cadence that you do, councillor Owen. And I'm one of the beneficiaries of that, as am any other chairs. So we thank you for that. But I think, look, you've made an extraordinary contribution to your community, an extraordinary contribution to your party, and a magnificent contribution to your city. And I know that although we'll be losing a very effective councillor, Neil and your kids will be gaining back a lovely wife and a loving mother. And I love those comments you made before. Those are comments that no other councillor in here would get away with, the ones about having the grandchildren, of course, as you know. And we know, Chair, that in Marchant, the new councillor will indeed have some very, very big shoes to fill. And we will, of course, be assisting them in being up for that task. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Are there any other items of general business? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I really do feel the urge to say a few words about councillor Hammond. I first met councillor Hammond when I was in the State Parliament, and of course, we would see each other from time to time at events where we had overlap. What I will share with you tonight is former councillor Amanda Cooper, councillor Fiona Hammond and Tracy Davis MP, were always confused. None of us looked like each other, but we all had blonde hair. So we spent most of our, we tired of correcting people, saying, no, I'm Tracy, or Fiona, or Amanda. So in the end, we answered to anything. What excites me about your new venture, Fiona, is that when Amanda Cooper and Fiona Hammond are elected to the State Parliament in October next year, the three blondes will be back. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Sorry, you caught me mid-pritzel. Are there any other items of general business? Councillor Hammond.
I know I'm pushing it, but I just want to say two things. I know I'm pushing it.
No, 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 you've got the call. You've got the call.
The clerks and the council officers, I failed to say thank you. I did say thank you to the clerks, and you have to put up with a lot. When Campbell was here, we were here till one o'clock in the morning at times, with his baby that he used to bring in late at night. We've had three fantastic Lord Mayors. To the council officers, you have been absolutely incredible. Lex, who's retired, Ted, Alan Jarvis, there's so many of them to say. I'd like to thank you for your dedication to Brisbane. You certainly have made a great impact to our community, and continue to do so with your dedication to our beautiful city. Councillor Davis, I can't wait to be called. I'm still councillor, right? You said Fiona. Until Friday, I'm still councillor, I'm going to hold on to that CR right to the end. But I look forward to continuing being calling Tracy, Amanda, Fiona, and just answering the questions that they give, and then giving you both a quick call to tell you what I'd said to them, so we wouldn't get confused. I forgot to thank the previous Lord Mayors, Campbell Newman, Graham Quirk, and of course, the current one, Adrian Shrinna. Thank you again for your time, your support. There's another lady I forgot to mention, and her name is Margaret DeWitt. Margaret DeWitt stood with me when I first started, because I used to cross my legs, put my head down as I spoke. Margaret took me under her wing and told me to put my head up and don't cross my legs any further, which, if anyone knows, Margaret DeWitt and Geraldine Knapp, who actually do what you're told. You don't argue against those two ladies. I failed to recognise my campaign team, who have been with me for 16 years. There's one of them up there, an amazing woman, Elaine O'Keefe. Thank you so much for your support over the many years. Dominic, I still can't look at you. To my close friends, only because I'll cry when I say goodbye to Domi. To my close friends, thank you so much for your support and putting up with my tears and supporting me all the way through. The 2018, you had my back right from the beginning. Was it tough few years there? And without the team's support through those years, I would like to thank you very much for standing by and helping me through. Of course, councillor Tracy Davis, councillor Tracy Davis has had many teary phone calls. And I couldn't do this without you, Trace. And I really appreciate the friendship that we've had over the years. Angela Owen, you and I have gone through a lot, both single parents at one stage together. Your dedication to the area has been absolutely amazing. This was mostly about saying goodbye to the council staff, so I'll be quiet now. Thank you. And I want to interrupt one more time, so I can get warned again. My last warning.
Councillor Hammond, your time has expired. Are there any other items of general business? I declare the meeting closed unless councillor Hammond wants to interject. Thank you, councillors. Meeting's closed.